We left off with an amendment by the Speaker. Speaker Ben.
Thank you, and since this is my seat, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, after consultation with the author of the legislation, I would respectfully allow, request the body to allow me to withdraw my amendment for deletion of Section K with the author to offer an amendment to amend that section instead.
Hearing no objection. All right, your amendment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, after, of course, conferring with the mover of the other amendment that was withdrawn, is that I was able to find out specifically what the concern was, and I guess for lack of better words, in the time in which this particular section was written, I'd like to proffer the amendment, which is on page eight, subsection K, and I'd like to make the amendment by removing chairperson to commission. That's the first one. And then removing the "may" to "shall."
On those two amendments, hearing no objection.
And then for these individuals now to serve in the subcommittees. And to be very specific, I'd like then to add four areas, and these are four areas that has been adopted by the FESPA organization who's planning for 2016. And they're program areas, but so right after the word committees, to add in these words. In the four areas of visual arts, performing arts, literary arts, and then the fourth is traditional arts demonstration and exhibitions. That way, what we're doing here by adding those four program areas for, these are the artisans and the producers of, you know, Chamorro Arts and Crafts and what have you in terms of what it is that we want to protect by providing this, you know, having the commission come up with their trademark. Because if you read on that J actually had allowed for two, and by the way, that should be corrected, instead of three, it's supposed to be two members that are appointed from organizations. So there's a difference between the organized two from an organization, and then the K will be the artisans themselves. And so that's the amendment that I would like to offer our members.
All right, on that amendment? Just K. Is it two or three, Madam Speaker, in J?
It's two. For J, it's two. So that's my other amendment, then, you're right. But, you know, I'm sorry, it's a...
All right, J, we'll take the amendment in J from three to two. Hearing no objection. K, the amendment for K that she read out, any objection? Anybody wish to be heard on the main motion? If not, Madam Speaker, you may move it down. Any objection to moving the bill down? The next bill to be heard. Senator Tom, are you people here? If not, we'll do Senator, Speaker Ben's 176. Is that okay? I have 176 and then 181, and the committee report has come out on 176, so if we can move on that while you're still waiting for GPA or...
I'm ready with 181.
Okay. I relinquish the chair, somebody else can make that decision.
Okay, wait, let me, what did you say? Okay, in the order, of course, in which we're going. Bill number 176 dash 32, recognize the author, Speaker Panglinen.
Thank you, and since this is my seat, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill number 176 is a bill that was reintroduced after a passage by this body and a veto by the governor. Bill 176 is a bill that would allow the establishment of and the continued operation of service contract providers within our community. This is an industry that had existed in the community in which we had entrepreneurs on Guam and businesses on Guam that were able to provide what is normally termed as extended warranties to consumer goods, basically, and automobiles by third-party providers of these services. And unfortunately, the insurance commissioner stepped in after several years and ruled that these types of services cannot be provided by companies unless they were chartered and set up as an insurance company, interpreting the service contract as an insurance contract versus a warranty contract.
I know you're beginning to discuss the bill, but the motion first to Senator, the third?
Yes, and so, Madam Speaker, what I wanted to do, of course, was based after that veto by the governor, we reintroduced the bill as Bill number 176 dash 32 COR, and I would like to make the motion that Bill 176 dash 32 COR be placed in the third reading file and like to continue the discussion on it.
Please continue, yes.
Thank you. And so, we had extensive discussion on this, and actually, there were very many, quite a few amendments that were made by the body on this to ensure that it was a tighter bill than we originally started out. And so, the bill was passed by this body, sent up to the governor, and the governor, in his review, had one objection. The governor felt that when we used that the service contracts were intended to be limited to mainly consumer goods and personal goods and not personal property. And so, in reviewing the bill, the governor's legal team had determined that the use of the word "property" in the bill may cause for an interpretation that would extend these service contracts and extended warranties to personal, personal property, I mean, yeah, personal property.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, Senator, we don't have, I don't have the bill. I don't think anyone has the bill.
Yeah, I have here received on the fourth. So can we please, let's take a brief recess then.
Okay, thank you.
It should have been passed out with a committee report?
The legislature's back in session. Speaker Panglinen, sorry for the interruption, but everyone should have a copy now of the bill.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As I was saying, Madam Speaker, so the bill was passed, and then the governor, in his review, was concerned by the use of the word "property" and that it could extend to real estate property and other properties instead of consumer goods. And that was his only, his only concern, or in his veto message, that was the one concern that he had as the reason to veto the bill. And so, what we've done, Madam Speaker, is we reintroduced the bill as Bill 176, we had another public hearing, we notified the parties, and we removed the word "property" and inserted the word "goods," so that now it's very clear that the provision of service contracts by companies on Guam would be limited to personal goods, consumer goods, automobiles, but excluding manufacturers' representatives of automobiles. So it removes the concern of the governor with regards to real estate property and the long-term effect of that as part of the warranties of construction governed under a completely separate part of the code. And so, this would then set the stage for these companies who were providing these services before in terms of service contracts until the insurance commissioner stepped in and said, "We want you to register as insurance companies rather than as service contract providers." And this is something that we see is occurring in the rest of the country, in which they are removing any interpretation of these providers of these extended warranties and distinguishing them from insurance companies and the requirements of chartering an insurance company in term, you know, in order to just provide service warranties to consumer products. And so, Madam Speaker, we hope that by working with the governor, taking to heart his veto message, removing the objection that he had, and inserting the proper term which we feel resolves those concerns, that this bill can move forward, and we can have, once again, these companies who are providing this service, providing employment to our local people, can, once again, come forward, register themselves at REVEN Tax, and then go back into the business of providing these service warranties or service contracts and extended warranties. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'm asking my colleagues for their consideration.
On the motion? Can you, I would allow you, Madam Legislative Secretary, to record your statement.
Since this is my seat, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I hope I understand the intent of this bill, and I was just wondering if I could ask the good sponsor of the legislation as it relates to insurances versus the providing of services based on things that people pay insurance or extended warranties for that repair. And if that's the intent, could he give me an example so that I could better understand this?
Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I guess one of the most prevalent example we have of service contracts extended to consumer goods, electronic equipment, is air conditioners. There is a standard manufacturer's warranty on the sale of the product itself, but what you have, for example, is, you know, one year, six months parts, one year labor. And what would occur, for example, is that's the manufacturer and the vendor's warranty, but then the vendor or the manufacturer would contract with a repair shop, and that, and they would say that for a certain fee, we will extend that warranty from six months parts and one year labor to one year parts and two years labor. And for a small fee, they would contract with a repair company that would then, if it breaks past the normal manufacturer's warranty, if it breaks in 18 months, then they will repair it for that fee that you've paid them for, for nothing, for that, just for that basic fee that you pay. So that's what you would call an extended warranty by a service contract provider, Madam Speaker. And so that's one example of how this industry works in our community with regards to goods such as an air conditioner.
Senator, was he able to answer your question then?
Yes, it does, Madam Speaker. So my final question then, so then, this bill will make it so that that person will register that business with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. They'll get a business license, so the answer was yes, and now I understand. So, and I stand and rise in support of 176 dash 32. Senator Moss.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, Speaker Panglinen, one last word, send it down. On the motion then to send 176 to third reading file without any objections, the order. 181 dash 32, recognize the author, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move that 181 dash 32, be moved to the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it.
And I just want to make sure that it's as introduced, yes, as introduced?
As introduced, as introduced, yes, ma'am.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I, this, of course, Bill 181 dash 32, is a bill which seeks authorization by, for Guam Water Works Authority to go to the bond market to borrow up to $495 million to continue with capital improvement projects. Now, before I go further, I just want to point out that out in the public hearing room is the chairman for the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, the general manager for the Guam Water Works Authority, and the chief financial officer for the Guam Water Works Authority. So if any, any of my colleagues have any questions and would prefer to ask them directly, I just want you to know that they are out there. I think I'd like to start off by, basically, you know, the question is, how do we get to this point where, here we are, it was just about three years ago when GWA was down here to, to seek authorization to go out to the bond market, and here we are, three years later, where they're coming down here asking for authorization to, to borrow more money. And, and basically, all this started back in December of 2002, just a very quick backdrop. US EPA sued the government of Guam and the Guam Water Works for failure to comply with federal clean water and safe drinking water laws. The federal court order was signed in June of 2003 directing that the government of Guam and GWA undertake repairs and the replacement of GWA infrastructure in order to improve service to the ratepayers and to bring GWA into compliance with federal laws. Now, many of us, of course, remember the times when we would have overflowing sewage down in Tumon, water services are poor throughout the island, basically, our oceans weekly, you know, stay out of the water because they're just dumping out, basically, untreated sewage. And so, after many years, US EPA finally came in and said, "Enough is enough. You've got to improve your system to be able to provide satisfactory service." So between 2003 and 2010, the Guam Water Works Authority borrowed and invested $220 million to begin upgrades to the system. To complete all the court-ordered projects, GWA is now seeking to borrow up to $495 million, and that's inclusive of financing costs, over the next five years in three separate financings, one in 2013, one in 2015, and one in 2017. And the way that $495 million will be used will be as follows. To complete the required capital improvement projects outlined in the court's stipulated order, Guam Water Works will need up to $313 million between 2013 and the year 2021. Additionally, additional projects appropriately classified as significant findings for water and wastewater have been identified. Failure to correct these findings will inevitably lead to system failures and unsatisfactory service to the community and the inability to sustain compliance with the Federal Clean Water Act. The added cost for these significant findings is an estimated $130 million. Now, the loans would be used to basically fund the following project categories. It will bring all three southern wastewater treatment plants in Agate, Yumadec, and Baza Gardens into compliance with their secondary treatment permits by the year 2018. It's estimated that $111 million will be needed for these three wastewater treatment plants. The funds will also be used to repair or rebuild all of the GWA water storage tanks islandwide by the year 2021, and an estimated $153 million will be needed to complete those projects. An additional $49 million will be needed to replace leaking water lines, upgrade booster pumps to improve water service pressures, refurbish or drill new water wells. And then, of course, the management of the system is going to be dependent on a updated systems analysis and monitoring technology, and they estimate that they will need approximately $39 million for that undertaking. Now, to minimize ratepayer impact and allow for gradual rate increases to be spread out over five to seven years, an additional amount of $142 million is required to fund two years of capital interest plus a debt service reserve for each bond borrowing. The financing for these borrowings will come from both improved efficiencies and rate increases. GWA has been working internally to reduce its operating costs and improve efficiency. Good examples of these is that leak repair times have now improved from 38 days to three days, saving Guam Water Works of roughly $2.4 million per year. Power consumption has been reduced about 6.7 percent lower than what it was in FY 2011. The need to purchase water from the Navy has been reduced. Guam Water Works uses 36 percent less water from the Navy, at a savings of $1.5 million than what it was three years ago. Lastly, the meter replacement program has led to significantly improved accurate billings. Since 2008, revenues have increased 48 percent, while operating expenses have risen only 22 percent. However, while GWA has made significant improvements to operations, the majority of financing to back the needed bond borrowings will derive from rate increases. Following approval from the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, Guam Water Works submitted a five-year rate plan to the Public Utilities Commission in June. Last week, the PUC approved the rate plan, subject to an annual review. So although they have laid out a rate increase of so many percent every year, they're going to go back and revisit if, in fact, all the underlying assumptions have held true, and then adjust from there and move on. Overall, rates will increase a total of 20 to 31 percent for residential customers between FY 2014 and 2018. So that would be an average of, for example, certain residential customers, an average of about 4 percent annually would be their rate increase. And for commercial and government ratepayers, the, the rate increase over that four, five year period would be, on average, about 66 percent. Now, approximately half of all of the GWA residential customers will see an overall increase of 20 percent. Now, these are the customers that basically use less than 5,000 gallons a year, and they are on what we call the lifeline rates. So we will see their rates increasing from what currently is about $57 per month to about, by the year 2018, rising to about $68 per month. And for those residential customers who utilize a lot more, over 5,000 gallons, they will see an increase of approximately 31 percent. see an increase of approximately 31 percent over the same time period, from an average of about $75 to about $99 per month. The commercial and government accounts, which vary widely in usage, will see a total increase of 66 percent over that five-year period. Now, the rate increases to meet the court-ordered US EPA requirements are not insignificant. However, neglecting to fund court-ordered improvements will trigger a costly and difficult receivership. GWA hopes to obtain approval from the legislature and the governor to issue the first $195 million in bond financing to fund the court-ordered improvements. And in order to meet the pending deadlines, GWA is aiming for a November pricing for the Series 2013 bonds with a bond closing occurring sometime in December. I should note that bond rating agencies have been looking at GWA these past few weeks, and GWA is cautiously optimistic that it will achieve investment-grade rating in the near future. That, of course, is still cautiously hopeful, they haven't received that word yet. And if they, in fact, achieve that investment-grade rating, that certainly will result in greater savings to ratepayers when they go out to borrow. Now, I should point out one thing, another thing that Bill 181 does, and what it does is it repeals a provision in an earlier law which required the Guam Water Works Authority to pay back to the general fund an amount of $20 million for, basically, an investment that was made many years ago using general fund money. And that borrowing has actually been paid off now. And it repeals it, one, it will be contrary to the bond indentures, and, secondly, that $20 million will inevitably translate to higher rate increases, of course, for the ratepayers. So, Madam Speaker, I know it was a long overview of the bill, but I hope that that pretty much sets the groundwork for everyone as we proceed forward. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill in general. It's critical that we bring our infrastructure up to speed, not only to comply with the federal mandates and avoid a court order, but just to improve the general services overall. You know, our residents in the South, they have a great deal of challenges with respect to the water services they receive, whether it's in the consistency of their water availability or in the turbidity that actually makes its way down into the water system. And this infrastructure upgrade will go a long way towards making sure that our southern residents are receiving the water services that they deserve. I did have one question that I wanted to pose, and this is with respect to the capitalized interest. The reason why this makes me want to ask this particular question is, basically, when we say that we're going to be borrowing for capitalized interest, it means that we're adding on to our overall debt a certain amount in order to make our payments and in order to set up this bond borrowing debt service reserve. $142 million is a lot of money, and to be borrowing this just to capitalize interest and to set up this reserve fund in order to offset ratepayer increases and to spread it out over five to seven years, I'm just curious, if we did not borrow this $142 million to capitalize the interest and spread out the rate increases, what would we be looking at in actual rate increases without this capitalized interest? Because right now, what it sounds like is we're looking at about 20 percent to 31 percent with this capitalized interest. Without it, what would we be looking at? Would it be 25 percent to 35 percent? Because when we get down to the individual percentages as it relates to the ratepayer, we need to weigh the cost-benefit of somebody having their bill going from, you know, $30 a month to $40 a month versus to $43 a month. I mean, what does the extra amount relate to in terms of the individual billing, and what exactly is the savings to consumers on an individualized basis with this $142 million in capitalized interest? Because realistically speaking, this $142 million in capitalized interest is going to amount to a significant amount of money when you factor in the interest expense of borrowing this additional $142 million. So I'm just curious, do we know what the impact would be if we did not capitalize the interest? And also, of the $142 million, how much of that is actually necessary for the debt service reserve that we need to establish? And do we have any alternatives to this debt service reserve, like perhaps insuring the bonds versus setting up the reserve to back up the payments?
Senator, do you hear to the question? I know there are a couple, but, you know, I would allow you again to ask and to repeat some of the questions, maybe, because I know there are like three or four questions.
Madam Speaker, I'm going to admit, the questions that my colleague has asked are certainly very important questions, and I will not be able to answer that right now. However, if we can, I'd like to maybe take, if we can take a short recess, and the people that do know are out there in the public hearing room, and they can provide that information.
Senator, two minutes. Can you please go to the microphone if you can do a point of inquiry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. In the efforts of trying to, just seeing what we could do, there's probably proposed legislation that will work with getting infrastructure with Suda for the Tomorrowland Trust. And I know that GWA is looking at borrowing through the bond, and I know that in the event that infrastructure is done and we turn it over to GWA, my question would be, would there be any violation of bond covenants, or could we make sure that, based on what we're doing with the borrowing with the bonds with GWA and the funding source that we would get, that it wouldn't be a violation when we turn the infrastructure over?
Well, we're going to take a recess, so maybe we can ask those guys the same question.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Recession. The legislature is back in session. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we suspend discussion on this bill and bring it into the committee of the whole, so I move that we resolve in the committee of the whole for purpose of hearing this bill.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered. We will have a brief recess to allow for the staff to set up.
On the matter of Bill Number 181-32, the bill to authorize the issuance of revenue bonds for the Guam Water Works Authority, I would like to just set some ground rules for the conducting of the committee of the whole. We will have a general opportunity for each member of the body to comment on the general matter of the bill, and then we will go back after giving everybody that opportunity. We'll ask that you try to limit those comments to five, 10, maximum of 15 minutes, and then we'll come back to the author for him to ask any questions he may wish of the panel that is here with us this afternoon, and then we will then proceed with additional questions by other members of the body in the order that they have raised their hand. And then we'll come back again after that for one more round of questions after the first initial round of questions, so additional round of questions and then closing comments by the members of the body. I'd like at this time to welcome our guests this afternoon. I'm going to ask that they introduce themselves, and I'll start with the person on my left, somebody I know quite well, Mr., oh, I'll just, no, I'll just let him introduce himself. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and Senator.
Thank you, Senator and Speaker Pangolinan. Guajosé Simón Sanchez, Chairman of the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, and I've also had the honor of sitting in this respected hall to serve as a senator, and we're happy that you've been able to take up our bill today, and we look forward to helping you make your decision on it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Greg Cruz, and I'm GWA's CFO. Thank you.
To my right.
I'm Martin Roush, I'm GWA's General Manager.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Thomas Cruz, and GWA's Chief Engineer.
Hafedé Lester Carlson, GEETA Public Finance Manager.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Welcome. I'll begin with Senator Tom Arada, and then I have Senator Tina Muñoz, and then Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, of course, I know that this bill has actually been in the works since the beginning of this year. There's been many hoops that Guam Water Works has had to jump through to get approvals from the CCU, the PUC, working with GEETA, and here we are today. And I think it's important, of course, to note that, as I understand it, the timeliness of the approval of this bill is really very important in order for the Guam Water Works Authority to be able to begin this next round of projects that they have to undertake in order to be able to get that much closer to completing all the required projects. Now, as I understand it, the projects that have going to be funded with this bond issuance are really identified by the court order, in addition to other significant findings which have been recently identified and have been determined that if GWA does not act on it in a timely manner, it's just going to get worse before it gets better, and then will make it difficult for Guam Water Works to be able to sustain compliance with the Clean Water Act. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I really am happy that we're going to break down the committee whole so that we can answer, so that the panel can answer the questions that I'm sure many of the members have. I've worked with Guam Water Works on this particular bill for a number of weeks, and to this date, you know, I'm still learning that there's still a lot of things, nuances with respect to this borrowing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Arada. Senator Muñoz Barnes?
Si, just, ma, si, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, before we broke for lunch, I had asked a point of inquiry in reference to violations of bond covenants based on what we could do to work with a program, with a federal program that could ascertain money for Tomorrowland Trust to build its infrastructure. And the question, if I may, if it's all right, if I can ask it at this time, because I know that we, I thought we were going to go through the bills, but if you can allow me to ask that question and ask for an answer, I might want to proffer an amendment, if that's okay with you.
I think we'll go ahead and do general comments.
Okay, then.
And then come back for the specific questions and any amendments that members may wish to propose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and as I understand, the reason for this legislation was to be able to comply with the clean water and safe drinking water laws and to bring up to speed what needs to be, I guess, upgraded as it looks at bringing all three southern wastewater treatment plants to compliance, to rebuild the water storage tanks islandwide, to invest in the water distribution projects, which will be islandwide, and then also for a systems analysis and monitoring technology upgrades for the systems management and energy savings, and also to minimize ratepayers' impact and allow for the gradual rate increase spread out over the additional five to seven years, and then also to look at the funding of capitalized interest plus debt service reserve for the bond borrowing. And I know that this legislation is greatly needed, and as I support the intent of that, my only inquiry was making sure that if we introduce other legislation to support infrastructure as it relates to the Tomorrowland Trust, and I know, Mr. Chair, that you've been really working closely and being oversight of Tomorrowland Trust, you understand what possibilities can happen if we can ascertain this fund from Suda. And hopefully, after we go around on the second round of for questionings, that I can go ahead and proffer that question so we can get an answer, and if it needs me to put an amendment to make sure that we're not violating an amendment to make sure that we're not violating anything, then it would be a win for the community. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to at least try and understand the intent and to support the intent, but also to make sure that what we do in later legislation doesn't affect what is going to happen here today. So, si, Jesus, mase.
Si, Jesus, mase, Senator Muñoz Barnes. Senators Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To restate for the record, my question is with respect to the 142 million that has been specified as the needed amount to capitalize interest and to cover the debt service reserve for the bond borrowing. And the reason I have a question with regards to that is basically, what we're saying when we say we're going to capitalize interest is that we're going to be borrowing this extra money to cover our initial payments. And if I subtract the 142 million from the 495 million, we're looking at a difference in terms of numbers from 495 million to 371 million. That 371 plus the 142 would take us to 495. And I'm just, I'm really trying to get a handle on the cost benefit of the capitalized interest portion, because from what I understand in the language, it's to pay for the capitalized interest for two years, which means this 142 million will cover the debt service reserve for the borrowing, and it will also cover all of the principal and interest payments for that two-year period. But what we're talking about in the overall sum of 495 million is about 20% of that is strictly going to the capitalized interest portion. And the reason why it's a question for me is because if we were to less that amount out and get a 5% bond, borrowing at 495 million will mean we're going to have $24.75 million in interest payments versus at 371 million, we're looking at 18.55 million in interest payments, which is a difference of $6 million per year in interest expenses alone. Depending on how long that capitalized interest is amortized, we may be looking, if it's going to be a 20-year bond, we're looking at $124 million in interest. If it's a 30-year bond, we're looking at $186 million just in interest expenses alone if we were to just capitalize the interest for two years. So my question is, if we, how necessary is this capitalized interest portion of the overall plan? And if we did not do that, what will be the immediate impact to ratepayers? Because I understand that we're doing this to try and spread out the cost to our ratepayers. We don't want to hit them with a really large increase at once. But at what long-term cost? Because, and I guess I can be corrected if I'm mistaken, but this 142 million in capitalized interest, that's going to be included in the amortization schedule for the full bond. So if it's a 20-year bond or a 30-year bond, we're paying interest on that 142 for 20, 30 years just to cover the first two years of capitalized interest and debt service. So what is the, if you know, because one of the things I always know is very unfortunate is that when we come up with these questions, if the answers aren't in front of you, it gets very difficult to answer. But if we did not capitalize the interest, what will be the impact to ratepayers?
I'm going to, this is the general round of questions. Your questions have been framed so that these panel members can start thinking about their response. I'm going to go then to other members who may want to ask, I mean, generally comment on the bill, and you're the first one on the list in terms of direct questions after the chairman. If the chairman had any other questions of the panel first, then you would be next in the questioning round, in which then they can respond to those, to the questions you presented, and then you can ask follow-up questions as well. I have Senator McCready on the general comments on the bill itself.
I just wanted to go on a few line items and ask him about the bill itself.
Can we wait till the next round where it's specific questions on specific portions of the bill?
Sure.
And just on the general bill, or did you want to?
Okay, I could ask one general question for now.
Sure.
And then we can go back to the line items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, earlier, when one of my colleagues gave some of the projections and the percentages, it was 20 to 31% of an increase. So my question is, aside from the lines that I want to go through in the next questioning format, is now, once these infrastructure, and the way I read it, infrastructure problems that we have with the system, once they're in place, and according to the bill, it's our debt service payment matures in 2055. So once these infrastructure problems are in place, and we are in compliance with all the mandates, whether it's federal, local, or self-imposed mandates that this bill has, do we project or do we foresee any refinancing of this current bond that would then make, what I'm trying to get to is, when is the next time we're going to have to comply? And if so, when we come to that crossroad, are we going to refinance for another hundreds of millions of dollars and kick that maturity can down the road when it comes to this subject? I think it's a fair question to ask. Is this the last of the infrastructures for this generation?
Yes, thank you very much. And once again, when we get back to the questioning round, we'll get their response to your question, and you can ask follow-up questions based upon their responses. I have Senator Ogden on general comments of the bill, and then Senator Rodriguez.
Si, Jesus, mase, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. I just would like to, first and foremost, I know I rendered my assistance and my support during the course of the public hearing in the recognition of not only complying and upgrading some of the water and wastewater system for our entire island community, but most importantly, for catching up. I think when you're looking at 300-some million dollars, or approximately 300-some million dollars, to catch up, to fix a system that otherwise should be fixed today to accommodate the needs of the community today, I think that says a lot in terms of the judicial requirement. Also, in addition to that, I think that GWA also went a step further by perhaps seeking assistance, or maybe it was an imposed visit by EPA into the GWA structure, and they've identified some findings that they need to address over the course of the next several years. And that's where the overall consolidated financing is going to be applied towards. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, and Mr. Chair, I'd like to just highlight, just for purposes of those who may be listening and watching in into this conversation, in terms of where some of these proceeds are going to go. I know that the sponsor of the legislation had mentioned, generally speaking, addressing some of the requirements, but it should the $497 million be provided by virtue of the authorization in this legislation. To comply with the 2011 federal court order, the following projects will need to be addressed to comply, keep in mind the federal court order. The tank rehabilitation and replacement of $153 million, which is going to take the bulk of the initial borrowing requirement. The Agua Sanarita wastewater improvements of $60 million. The Baza Gardens wastewater improvements of $33 million. So that's approximately $93 million right there to provide additional support to the southern infrastructure. And then the Yamada, Mariso, Malesu wastewater improvements of $18 million. Northern District wastewater upgrades, $11.5 million. The Agania wastewater interim measures, another 11.5. Sinohanya water system, approximately $9 million. The groundwater chlorination, 6.3. The water metering, an additional $5.9 million, Mr. Speaker. And the SSES work plan of 2.1, and then the UGAM surface water treatment plan, an additional investment of $1.9 million. That's just to comply with the federal court order. There are some other requirements there in terms of the specifics, how they will be addressed, but that entire amount, Mr. Speaker, that I read to you adds up to approximately $313 million for the initial borrowing scheme. Now, looking at also some of the other requirements, the 2012 capital improvement projects, significant findings by the EPA would require an additional $79 million just off the bat. Water system planning is 8.6. Obviously, that's associated with any capital improvement projects that GWA has to undertake. The water line replacement program, $28.6 million. The water booster pump stations, 9.4. Electrical, mechanical improvements. UGAM treatment plant, another $6 million, and electrical, mechanical improvements is about $750,000. The new production well development of $22.5 million, and then some lab-associated fees of about $750,000. And the SCADA implementation for the water component, $3 million. That in and of itself, my understanding, is going to be part of the second phase of borrowing resources in the bond market that adds up to about $80 million. And then finally, Mr. Speaker, thank you for your indulgence, on the wastewater component, part of the 2013 significant findings for wastewater requirements here in our community. And I need to keep things also in perspective, Mr. Speaker, in terms of looking at this and saying, okay, these are findings, but do we need to address them immediately? The answer is, if we have an opportunity to acquire resources at a very reasonable rate, why would we not want to take advantage of that opportunity so that we can get the system into place and in the condition where, in fact, we won't have any unnecessary emergencies, especially as it applies to many of our water systems. Now, with the 2013 significant findings, the planning is $7.7 million. The northern, central, and southern basins would be approximately $6.8 million. The wastewater collection system rehabilitation is $18.1 million. The lift station, an additional $14.4. The lab is $750,000, and the SCADA implementation for the wastewater component is about $3 million. That's about $51 million more that will be added towards addressing some of the 2013 significant findings. So just in terms of general comments and looking at this, $313 million plus the $79 million plus the $50 million, the reality is, is that the system needs to be fixed. We know that a minimum of $313 million is needed immediately to try to comply with the court injunction and the court requirements. We also know that 70 or 80 million plus an additional 50 would be required. Now, I don't think we want to go to that extent where in four years, the court's going to step in and say, by the way, these were significant findings four years ago, absolutely zero was done, you could have borrowed money at a reasonable rate, now the rates, based on the market conditions, may increase. Now, the borrowing capacity in terms of interest associated with borrowing would be, may be significantly higher, and it would be an additional cost to our ratepayers. So based on that overall justification, I understand the need and the requirement to be able to go out and borrow some resources. I think one question that the good chairman of CCU, as well as the administrator of Guam Water Works Authority, is a question that I had previously during the course of our public hearing. And based on, I understand that the PUC has approved a three, a rate adjustment scheme for five years to take into consideration the borrowing of this, based on three separate borrowing schemes. If, in fact, GWA were to go out into the market and borrow on three separate occasions, what would be the rate adjustments that will be necessary to ensure that they meet all the requirements of the bond borrowing authority or the bond covenant, and then also allow the ratepayers to not have an immediate rate shock? But my question again, and, Mr. Chairman, I understand, I will pose this question later, but my question will be, if we were to adjust, rather than going out and borrowing on three separate schemes, to just consider the possibility of borrowing on two separate schemes? And I say this because even the numbers, Mr. Speaker, that were provided by GWA officials at the public hearing says that conceivably, we can save the ratepayers no less than $33 million in bond set aside annualized requirement plus the interest and any other fees associated with going out and borrowing for paying for casanta fees and whatnot. So that would be my question that I would like to pose. If we can save the ratepayers $33 million, and if you just stretch your second borrowing scheme a year down the road, rather than 2015, 2016, can that conceivably be done to save the ratepayers a minimum of $33 million? Thank you very much for your indulgence, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. I have Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much to the panel. You know, I too understand the need for us to be able to go out there and get these fundings to make the improvements that we need to our water and wastewater system. And so, you know, I'm glad that we're here and also being able to, we're here to discuss in Committee of the Whole how we're going to move forward with this. Just recently, the PUC had approved a rate increase. I know it was lower than what GWA expected, and so that's good news, but still, we're going to have an increase, our people are going to have an increase. The hardest hit would be our government and the commercial customers. And so, if you take a look at that average, I believe it was a 57% increase, average of increase with spread out over a five-year period, and then you have part of this legislation in front of us is the authority to borrow $142 million. And the purpose, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to lessen the impact on our people. And so, you know, if, you know, once we get to that point, if you can explain to us, how does that lessen the impact when we're going to be having to deal with 31% increase for residential, our residential customers, and about 65% for our commercial? And so, how is that going to lessen the impact? Because $142 million is a lot of money. And so, it just, at least for me, you know, for, you know, for the common individual out there, it just doesn't make sense. And so, if you can help us understand and put some sense into that. And so, the other question I have is, yeah, so the other question I have is that, for you guys to be able to lower the increase, you originally anticipated a larger increase, but you've worked with your consultants and did some items to try to lessen it. If you can share that with us as well, and then see how we could stretch it even further to see how we could even, you know, lessen the impact on our ratepayers. Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. I have Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know some may think this comment a little glib, but I mean it in all sincerity. These numbers boggle my poor little abacus, and I really have problems when I think that the repayment will not be until 2055, at which point I should be about 104 years old. I'm not sure whether or not I have any standing to vote on this bill, since I have no children or grandchildren, or actually, for some of you, great-grandchildren who will be paying this debt back. This is a debt of well over 1.2 billion, actually, when finally repaid. And I just have real concerns as to whether or not, speaking for myself, having no one to assume any part of this responsibility after I'm gone, should be making this decision for our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Any other member that wish to make some general comments? If not, I'm going to go then to the questioning round, and the first member I have on the questioning round is the chairman, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question that I have is, with this round of borrowings, is the terms of indenture for this borrowing substantially different from the, in the indenture for the 2005 and the 2010 borrowings?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Ada, the only difference between the 2013 borrowing that is, that starts with this bill, as you know, this bill is actually asking for the three proposed borrowings, but the only difference in structure is that in 2005, we only used two years of capitalized interest. Then we tried this idea of, well, what would make it easier for ratepayers? So in 2010, we went to three years of capitalized interest, and the reason that makes it easier for ratepayers is you can spread the rate increases out another year. But we also realized that, as some of the members are already asking, a very good question is, but you've borrowed a whole nother year of interest, so you've added to the principal amount. So we decided with these borrowings, we'd go back to two years of capitalized interest because the cheapest way to borrow, the cheapest way to borrow is zero years of capitalized interest. The problem is, you're paying principal and interest 30 days after The problem is you're paying principal and interest 30 days after you get the bond and you haven't built anything. You know, like we've discussed at the hearing, when you, when you get a construction loan at home, you don't get the construction money from the bank to pay your contractor and then 30 days later, you got to write principal and interest. It's usually an interest accruing obligation during the construction phase. You cap a lot, you take that interest during your construction phase. Some borrowers pay it as they go. Some borrowers just take it all and throw it on the takeout mortgage and amortize it over 30 years. So GovGuam has, long before I showed up and to this day, continues to use two years of capitalized interest. You could go to three, but it is more expensive in the long run for ratepayers. Two works for two reasons. It kind of recognizes that no matter what, unless you want to start paying for the loan, the principal of the loan 30 days after the bank has given it to you, you could, but you'd have to have the principal and interest ready and you haven't even moved into the house. The contractor's been working on your house for one month and you're already paying principal and interest. That's why most loans to, that we've all participated in in our homes or businesses say, here's the construction loan. It's good for a year. So think of that as the construction loan is like capitalized interest for the government. The other problem that complicates it for GovGuam is because of our unique procurement requirements in the government of Guam, first off, you can't procure anything unless you have the money. So as has been the practice of the government for the last umpteen years, you get the money from a bond, you now can issue bids for the agate treatment plant, for the repairs to the tanks, for all those things on that list. You can't issue a procurement unless you have all the funds available. So we have to have the money now so that Mr. Roush can then issue, begin to issue the procurements for design and build. That usually takes three, six, eight, you know, GovGuam procurement, we've been very successful at GWA. We don't have a lot of protests, but you never know. But the procurement, writing them up, issuing them, letting the bidders respond, picking the bidder, awarding the bid, and mobilization in GovGuam, that, that almost always takes a lot, a much longer time than it does for, you know, when you're doing just business or your personal loan. So you're almost spending the first year just finding out who's going to build your solution and at what price. And then the second year, you're having them build. And then by the third year, you start paying principal and interest. This puts a lot of pressure on the contractor and GWA to build the project within two years because the whole logic has been you never want to charge the customer, the ratepayer, for principal on an asset that they don't even get, they don't get to use yet.
So is the capitalized interest the only difference in the indenture, Senator Attia's question?
So the, there is, there is no difference in that. There is capitalized interest in these borrowings, just as there was in 2005, 2010. The only difference is this is two years of capitalized interest. We've tried it two years, we've tried it three years, we've gone back to two years because it's the cheapest way to borrow the money.
Senator Attia.
And the, I believe, is the interest, the maximum, the ceiling on the interest rate, is that the same as the, as the previous borrowing?
Yeah, yeah, that hasn't, we didn't, we didn't change that, right? Let's...
I don't believe so, sir, but also getting back to your previous question, what we're going to be doing, it'll be a supplemental indenture. So the 2005 is the master, the 2010 is the first supplemental, the 2013 will be an additional supplemental. So all the fundamental criteria for the borrowing, all the covenants, all of the lists of things that GWA has already agreed to do and has been doing will be covered by the master indenture. And again, this will be a supplemental.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Any additional questions, Senator Attia?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, just for the record, they're actually, we actually have one financing in which we're actually paying rent before the construction is finished on the, we're paying rent and insurance before construction is finished and we have no beneficial use of the building at this time, so...
The, well, but as you know, the minute...
But it's not a GWA project.
That's right.
So that's it. Okay. Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my question was with respect to the capitalized interest. And I understand in the initial comments from Mr. Sanchez, who's been working very hard for our people, he likened the use of capitalized interest as a construction loan and then you, and then you take it out in your, in your mortgage. Now, when I built my house, I got a construction loan. And what it was, was I had to pay the interest only out of pocket for those months that it was under construction. And then when the house was finally built, I rolled over the full amount of construction into a mortgage. I didn't take all of my interest payments and stick it into my mortgage. I actually paid that interest during the course of construction. With this capitalized interest, the way I'm seeing it is that would be like me going out and getting a 30-year mortgage and saying, for a $200,000 house, and saying, I want to borrow 230,000 so I don't have to make payments for the first two years. And so my house will be worth 200, I will be borrowing 230, so I don't have to pay for the first two years of cost for living in the house. And that's where I'm kind of, I'm kind of unsure about the capitalized interest approach because by doing it that way, I would be immediately ensuring that the, that the cost of my, that my borrowing is exceeding the value of the asset. For example, if I was borrowing $200,000 to build my house, my house is, let's just say, valued at 200,000, but then I said, let me tack on another 30 to escape two years of payments, I'll be underwater in terms of the value of my asset versus the debt that I borrowed by $30,000. And so, you know, so with the capitalized interest, I'm still trying to reconcile the true value upfront. For me, the only real value I see is that it will allow us to spread out the rate increases to our people. What I'm really interested in finding out is what is the rate increase projected to be with this capitalized interest? And what would the rate increase be if we did not capitalize the interest?
Okay, okay. Number of great questions. Even, even we have to sit down and sort all those out to make sure we're making the best decision for the ratepayers. Well, let's try to take your example. You're building your house, $200,000 house. You get the construction loan so your contractor can get going. Yes, you have a choice. You could say, I'll at least pay the interest on my $200,000. Let's say it's 5%, so interest would be $10,000 for one year, right? So you have two choices. You can, you can wait and tack the $10 on the back end and make it a $210,000 loan, or you could pay the interest, interest, interest every month. You could start to make payments so that when you do the takeout loan, it's only 200,000. Am I, so far so good, Senator? Okay, all right. So here's the challenge. On a $195 million loan, the first one, let's assume we get, well, let's take 7% interest because that's how we ran all these scenarios, was, correct, 7%, 7%? We ran 7% interest, okay? We're hopeful to get better, but we're not sure. So we ran 7% interest within the legal max of seven and a half. So seven and a half percent interest on 195 million is, for round numbers, $14 million. If we tried to pay the interest as we go, we would need a $14 million payment made this fiscal year. GWA is a $70 million company right now. We would have to raise rates 14 million on top of 70, 20% right now just to pay the interest. The rate increase that was approved last week by the PUC only raises the rate 14 to 15%. 15%. So, yeah.
First year, 15?
15, 1.5, okay? So, so right there, that's the challenge. The day we get the loan, we have no addition, we only have the one rate increase for the first year. It's a 15% rate increase. But if we had to pay the, and that doesn't include any interest payments. We're not, right now, the way the deal is structured, it's consistent with all the other GovGuam bond structurings, we would need to come up with a $15 million, the 20% of the 195 million, I do the math right? I'm sorry, 7% of 195 million. We'd have to come up with a $15 million of interest this year. So that would require a 20% increase just to pay the interest this year, okay? And it would pay the interest the next year, but we'd have to move that 20% interest up now or instead, we've, we've reduced it to 15 and we've spread it, we've pushed it back a little bit. But you're right, what you are trading off is whether you can come up with 20 million, I'm sorry, 7% of 200, whether you can come up with, whether GWA ratepayers can come up with another 14 million just for interest-only payments during the first two years of this bond. Then when we do the 2015 borrowing, that's going to be 150 million, that's another $10 million worth of interest for the 15, 16 period. These would be rate increases just to pay the interest as we go. So there's two challenges for us from a policy point of view. First off, one is even with the interest, we're charging Tan Maria for assets while it's under construction. The only thing I disagreed with your example is you can't move into your house while it's under construction. So yes, you, you take your 30,000 in interest, put it on the back end of your loan and 12, 13 months from now, you move into the house and you're paying a mortgage on 230,000, but at least you're in the house, okay? So we're, it's still pretty much the same logic. We're saying we don't want to charge ratepayers till they can benefit from the improvement that is being funded. So we need enough time to procure it and construct it. So the question is while you're procuring and constructing over, let's say, a two-year period, what should you do? Well, you could pay the interest as you go, but you would have to accelerate your rate increases that we've designed or, and it would be cheaper over 30 or 40 years, but you'd front load that rate increase, that 57% rate increase we got, we'd have to move it up. Similarly, if we broke the borrowing into just two borrowings instead of three borrowings, we'd have to move up, we'd, the faster you borrow, the faster you must raise rates. The slower you borrow, the slower you can raise rates. That's why we wrestled with two years in '05. That was GovGuam standard. We just did it. We said in 2010, let's, what about three years? We are costing the ratepayers an extra bucket of interest, but it allows us to slow down the rate increase. And part of the logic too, from a rate setting point of view and infrastructure point of view, and I think Vice Chairman BJ made me think about it when you were commenting, my grandson's going to help pay for this when he gets out of college in seven years. Our grandchildren and great-grandchildren will help pay for this, but they're also using the water tank and they're going to get water from those water tanks and they're going to send their wastewater to those wastewater plants. They're going to benefit from the infrastructure. So the whole reason you finance infrastructure over 30 or 40 years, like you finance your house over 30 or 40 years, is you're going to get to use it for 30 or 40 years. Why would you want to make mom and dad pay for the house in five years when they could spread it out, let their children grow, maybe they pass, you know, I'm hoping to pass on my house to my children, maybe there's a small mortgage left after 28, 29 years, but then they get to live in the house. And so you want the users that benefit from the asset to also pay for the asset. So yes, it is a burden we pass on to our children and grandchildren, but it's not like they're not going to drink water over the next 30 or 40 years or use the restroom over the next 30 or 40 years. So they as a ratepayer are paying for the cost of a service from which they benefit. And the only thing that we're debating today, and it's a very good debate, but at least the decision of the government of Guam over the last 30 years has been, you can have zero capitalized interest, but you better have a big ability to write a check in 30 days when the first principal payment is made. Now, if you do capitalized interest, you only need the interest payment made. Now, the question is should you still pay the interest as you go while you're in construction or should you wait and combine it and throw it all on the back end? You are correct, it is more expensive to throw it out on the back end, but we also have 30 to 40 years to spread it out over more ratepayers that will join the system and we can spread that burden across more people. Every rate increase we accelerate now is only hurting existing ratepayers. So that's why our sense of it, it's better to price these, the cost of borrowing for these assets with two years of capitalized interest, spread it out over 32 years instead of 30, well, I'm sorry, all the notes will be 30 years. I think the law says 40 years, but we, none of our notes have ever gone past 30 years, less than this borrowing, nothing's going past 30 years. Even the refinancing that we would contemplate that is allowed by law, we wouldn't extend the term. If we can lower the interest rate, that will do. But we won't extend the term because we're like you, we want to get out of the debt as fast as possible. So that's why, so that's why the structure has always wanted to have some level of capitalized interest because that gives us two years. When this loan is done, the debt service on 195 million will be, Greg, 15 million? Right now, so it's $15 million. Right now, we only pay $7 million for the 2005 bond, but, but guess what? The 2010 bond, after three years of capitalized interest, guess what happens in 2014? We now have to pay principal and interest. What have we done since 2010? Rate increase, rate increase, rate increase, so that when Greg needs to write the check this, this year for principal, he's got it in the rates already. We could have waited for three years and hit everybody with a 25% rate increase or we can go eight, eight, eight. So that, that's sort of the logic that we at the CCU level, that's the policy call we've made. It's consistent, Commissioner Duenez is in the back as well, we were on the PUC when we started the PUC and as we worked, at that time, we only worked with GPA, the same discussion was had, what's better? How much capitalized interest? They said, well, we need some time for construction and we need some time for procurement. And unfortunately, under GovGuam, procurement takes, takes longer than normal. So that's where the two years came from. That's, that's how, that's how the legislatures before have allowed borrowing to occur. And, and yes, even the legislature said we could try three years interest in 2010. Our proposal, the 495, was built around going back to two years interest to reduce the total borrowing by that amount, by another year of avoided capitalized interest. But, you know, the bottom line is you can move this up, but you would move up the rate increases or you can move it, or you can spread it out and reduce the rate increases, but there is a cost of delay. Time costs money. But our thinking is once the project is done, once the agate, molestu, and Bozagard and wastewater plants are producing service to the ratepayers by 2016, all right, then we'll pay some principal. But we don't, we don't want to pay it any sooner, we need the time to build it, right? And that's also why we spread the borrowings out so we could spread out the rate increases. So all of this has been designed to try to delay borrowing as far as you can to meet, you still have to meet the court order. So all these debt, all the borrowing, as Senator Uggan has well summarized, the timing of the borrowing is to make sure Mr. Roush has the money net of the reserve, net of capitalized interest, net of cost of issuance. When you take from the 495, it's about 153 million worth of capitalized interest, that nets Mr. Roush 342 million. What's in that 153? There are, as you know, the debt service on each note, you're required to keep one year of debt service. So debt service on the whole borrowings are going to be 50 million, 60 million?
40.
40 million on all three, once, so just, we're going to need a $40 million reserve fund just for one year of principal and interest payment on the three borrowings, right? If we get interest rates lower, maybe it won't be 495. If we can get lower interest rates, if we can get an improved credit rating, if we can continue to improve our performance, right now, we've used 7% for the, the whole five-year period. We use 7% in the borrowings. But one of the things we negotiated with the rate consultant for the PUC was, and we agreed, hey, if we can keep improving our performance, get a better bond rating from the rating agencies like GPA did when GPA finally got back to investment grade, the savings of GPA's debt was 0.85%, almost a full percent interest on 3, 400 million, 257 million bucks. That saved ratepayers $26 million just by getting to investment grade. If GWA is successful at getting to investment grade in the next five years or sooner, then we will be able to achieve lower interest rates that will reduce the capitalized interest and the cost of borrowing. We still want to keep it two years. I mean, if you were to change this to one year, we'd have to run back to the CUC and change the rate case.
Okay. Senator Nicholas, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, and I appreciate the thorough explanation. For me, it's 100, the question is 186 million dollar question. Because if we're looking at a 30-year bond for 124 million, the interest expenses alone and the difference between capitalizing the interest and not comes out to 186 million dollars at the end of 30 years, just in extra interest expenses alone on the 124. And so for me, the 186 million dollar question is if we did not capitalize the interest, what would be the ratepayer increased, what would be the ratepayer increase that we would need to have in order to move this forward without the capitalized interest?
Okay. We, we'd have to go calculate that for you. We could go calculate the scenario, it would probably take us, I mean, we wouldn't be able to do it this afternoon on a piece of paper, but we, but we could, we could. So if you would like us to try to do that. But we'd also have to calculate the rate increase that would have to occur to, to pay for it. Okay. So you want to know the rate increase of zero capitalized interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Senator Munya Barnes and then Senator Uggan and then Vice Speaker Cruz, then Senator Creed, Senator Morrison.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Speaker, I'm...
Mr. Speaker, earlier, when I was first giving the comments on the bill, I asked about wanting to make sure if a program that would help underserved trust areas would affect the borrowing efforts of GWA, if a program that was allowed to move forward to help with the infrastructure and the improvements of Chamorol Land Trust, if we were to utilize SUDA, would that affect the bond-borrowing efforts today as we speak? And I guess when we were in recess, I had the short answer, so publicly, my question, as I will state it to them, is, will the substantial underserved trust area financing program violate the bond covenants of GWA? And in the SUDA program, Mr. Chair, is the substantially underserved trust areas. It is, agency that oversees this is the Rural Utility Services, which is USDA, and its main mission is to improve, construct, finance, the acquisition, improvement of infrastructure projects. Guam, based on Section 7 CRF, Part 1700, which is the Code of Federal Regulation, said Guam is included to being a part of that program. And, Mr. Chair, I noted earlier that you have been working really hard on trying to see what we could do to work closely with Chamorol Land Trust as it relates to the infrastructure and making sure that adequate infrastructure, water, wastewater system is provided for all the programs that will happen in the Chamorol Land Trust. And the short answer to me was no, that it wouldn't affect, but I would like to get it for the record, because if I do get it for the record, I want to make sure that I proffer the right amendment. So I posed that as an inquiry.
Gentlemen?
And ask Martin to answer.
Martin?
Because it was legal counsel that brought it to our attention.
Honorable Secretary, per your request, I called GWA's legal counsel, and he concurred with me that it would not affect GWA. And the longer answer is that because it's a separate loan from a separate agency, you're going to build, this agency is going to build the infrastructure and then turn it over to GWA. So if the turnover's done per GWA's standard procedures, you know, we have the right, it's our property, it gets transferred over, the property itself, the sewers, the water, the pump stations get transferred over, then it would not affect our bonds at all.
Mr. Chair, that being said, Mr. Speaker, if I may then, based on that answer, I do have an amendment, and if I could propose that right now, it would be really, really simple, it would be on page five, and before the severability clause, I guess I would just add a new Section 4 to the bill, and I will read it if I can. It will be Section 4, that the borrowing authorized herein shall not bind GWA or the government of Guam in any indenture or covenant which will decrease Guam's eligibility for the substantial underserved trust area, which is SUDA financing program described in 7 CFR Part 1700. That would be my amendment.
Mr. Chairman? There's an amendment that's been proposed by Senator Munia Barnes, and I'd like to go ahead then and ask any members of the body if they have any comments on the amendment. Yes, Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question, I think the sponsor of the amendment certainly highlighted the direction in terms of taking and incorporating this particular amendment into this legislation, but I think that prior to it being inserted in, we need to get to some extent an assurance from bond counsel if, in fact, this would restrict or increase any impediments for going out into the bond market and borrowing. Because the trade-off is, okay, based on the SUDA, how much resources can the community of Guam benefit versus going out into the bond market and acquiring this at the projected rate that they've already come up with, and borrowing it at hopefully the most minimal cost of interest? It's a concern I have, Mr. Speaker, in regards to how, if any, because if, in fact, bond counsel comes back and says, this has absolutely no relation, this amendment has absolutely no relation to your borrowing authority, then I would have no concern in terms of inserting it into the legislation. But that's the only issue that I have right now, unless we can, Mr. Speaker, get assurances from representatives of either GIDA or anyone at the table that perhaps this would not affect the ability of GWA to go out and acquire the resources that it's projecting to borrow and limit some of its access to some of these funds. So, Mr. Speaker, I don't know if you would yield to anyone at the table providing a response, or if, in fact, it may necessitate getting bond counsel to provide a response. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Is that an objection to the amendment, or is that a request for a recess, for clarification from counsel?
I'm extending a serious concern if, in fact, it's going to impede it, because you and I know that having, and members of this body, that inserting some provisions that perhaps would appear at the forefront as not impeding the process, but then eventually make, bond counsel may step back and say, by the way, this is a provision that may not be necessary. So I'm expressing a concern, not necessarily a direct objection.
Okay, all right. So any other members of the body on the amendment itself? Senator Ada?
Thank you.
Oh, well, let's get the body, the members concerned, and then any addition and interpretation by anybody else, I think, would be after that.
I guess the concern that I have with the amendment is that the development of the Chamorol Land Trust properties, which is to be made from some funding program, some loan program, you know, I guess is no different from Paradise Estates, that's going to build 300 units, is going to go out and borrow the money to put in the infrastructure. Really, is, I don't see, I don't see the linkage between that out there and this particular borrowing authority that's being requested. Now, I noticed that GIDA, there was, the GIDA representative was going to, I guess, provide some clarification, but I'm just, I am having some concerns about how is this amendment germane to this bill? And so I would raise an objection then to making this an amendment to the bill.
Okay, so there is an objection to the amendment. Any other members of the body may wish to comment, and then I'll ask the panel here if they had any other thoughts on it. If not, any members of the panel have any thoughts on the amendment?
My understanding of the program is that it would be a government-financed program to assist underserved areas. If, in fact, the government of Guam, not GWA, similar to, as Senator Ada pointed out, were the obligor to the loan, and within the context of GWA's rules and regulations, place the infrastructure in the proper easements, and then turn the operational water and wastewater system over as new customers to GWA, first of all, there's no recourse to GWA for repayment of any infrastructure, as Senator Ada mentioned with his Paradise Estates analogy. And so I, there isn't a recourse to them, it would add more customers to them at no cost for the infrastructure, and it would open up affordable housing opportunities, which I think is your primary concern. But I apologize, Senator Barnes, but I actually think that there really isn't a correlation.
Well, like in Paradise Estates, Mr. Chair, I want to note that usually that would be a private development, turning over after they build the infrastructure to the government, the government runs it and all that. This, the correlation with SUDA and Chamorol Land Trust is that the funds that we need to get to build the infrastructure and to work it, the funding will come from another source away from GW, GWA, but when the construction is done and everything's turned over, the other project doesn't have a lien. SUDA will have a lien because it borrowed the money to build the infrastructure.
Right, Senator, so pardon, I apologize, I don't know the program that well, but who borrows the SUDA money? It's not going to be GWA, right?
No, it would be the government.
Okay, so the government of Guam?
Not necessary.
Well, the Chamorol Land, the Chamorol Land Trust.
But it won't be GWA?
It could be GWA.
It could be a private, it could be the government or a nonprofit organization to borrow.
So if this has any help to you, there are restrictions, I don't see how GWA would be able to borrow the money on the behalf of a developer, even if in this case, the developer happens to be the government of Guam, right, the Chamorol Land Trust, right, or its representative. So, you know, we don't borrow any money for anybody's development. The developer, whether it's public or private, whether it's Chamorol Land Trust, or Tina Munia Barnes building her own house, or, you know, Ken Corp. building a hotel, the private entity, or the entity building the infrastructure borrows the money, puts it in, and builds it. And then after it's done, GWA takes over that system and simply operates it and charges the Chamorol Land Trust customers, or whomever, Tina Munia Barnes, when you built your new house, we just charge you for the water you use. So that's fairly straightforward. If GWA's not borrowing the money, there is no, we have no, the only lien that would exist is from the lender that loaned the Chamorol Land Trust, I guess it's the SUDA program. They might have lien, they would probably want liens on the property, they want to make sure they're repaid. Those customers simply become customers of GWA, and as long as you pay your water bill, you get water. And if you don't pay your water bill, we turn off the water. But we're not involved in the financing. I think the way you've proposed it, I would just raise two issues. The, I'm not sure it fits in, if GWA's not borrowing the money, I'm not sure why you may want to put it here, but you are putting it in a separate section, and there's a severability clause.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't hamper one program of borrowing versus doing another program which works closely with GWA, and then there would be a conflict, our violation of the bond covenants, because there's an added debt. And that's my only concern, is to make sure that we're allowed to borrow from this program, we're allowed to work with this program, and then after the program is completed and GW takes over, will this program in any effect, I want to make sure that it doesn't violate, I want to make sure that I don't hurt what's happening today in your request, because it's not included here.
So as long as GWA is not borrowing the money, I guess you could put that clause in, this is the body of law related to how GWA can borrow money. Now, you can obviously amend any body of law you want, but you would be sticking a, this section would be, if GWA's not borrowing the money, then, I'm sort of like Senator Ada, I'm not sure why, that you're a good idea fits here.
I think because the SUDA program is structured that it could allow GWA to borrow the money, and then once the construction is completed, the repayment is guaranteed by the trust itself from the revenue source of the trust. But it could be that it's GWA that borrows the money if the trust doesn't have the borrowing capacity. So it's possible to do that, I think that was, came out during the roundtable discussion.
So maybe the way to talk about, to think about it would be, when the government of Guam is ready to decide who will borrow the money, if it is GWA, you know, we would have a lot of conversations with you well before that, we would show the proposed language to Stan Dirks and the bond councils, and make sure that nothing you're proposing would violate that, would violate existing bond covenants. Because as Mr. Carlson accurately described, these loans are simply amending the original 2005 loan. The 2010 amended the 2005, the 2013 will amend the 2005, the 2015 will amend, because the 2005 laid down all the ground rules for borrowing. That says all future loans can be repaid by the ratepayers. Gov.-Guam can't, in 2005, in the indenture, it says Gov.-Guam cannot impose an obligation onto GWA without providing the funds for it. So you notice like the retirement benefits that we now have to pick up, that's why we had to pass on the surcharge, to not violate the bond covenant, where Gov.-Guam would be imposing an obligation on GWA that wasn't directly related to the infrastructure of GWA. This is to stop the government from saying, okay, GWA, you have money, go build a hospital. So you want to be careful, and you are, you're saying, I don't, you don't want to prevent any problems with GWA. But I think if you haven't decided who's borrowing the money, it might be premature to stick that idea in this bill, just because you might not end up having GWA borrow the money at all. But if, and then if the policy call was to have GWA borrow the money, you would go to this section of the law. There's two ways we can borrow money, we can do short-term and long-term. This is the long-term section, this is where you put the long-term bonds. We would have to look at your proposal, run it to bond counsel, and just say, hey, can we do this without violating the 2005 bond covenant as amended by the 2010 note, 2013, or whatever notes we would have. So that may, I don't know if that helps you think about it. Right now, I don't, in listening to it, but I'm not bond counsel, if you're going to put it in a separate section, if it does become a problem, then the severability clause would extinguish it. But it does raise a gray area kind of at the last hour about something we're not even sure how it's going to work, and who's borrowing the money, and so that would be our concern.
Yes, can we just get then, maybe suspend discussion on the amendment? There is an objection to the amendment, so we would not vote on the amendment. Compare it against the indenture, the indentures exist, you have the 2005, 2010, and now the supplemental indenture for 2013. Maybe all the minds here review that, and then just pass it on to Dirks, to the bond counsel this evening, and then get some kind of response in the morning before we actually put it to a vote of the body? Is that acceptable to the, but we'll still accept comments on, concerns on the amendment itself, so that we can flush out any additional concerns on it. So I had Senator Uggan on the amendment, you had talked about it, Senator Ada had objected to the amendment. Any other member of the body wish to comment on the amendment itself that may help clarify the question to bond counsel and the review by the panel here? If none, all right, then Senator Barnes, you still have the floor then for any other questions, comments, or amendments to the bill.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, the question posed right now, even if there's an objection, that the minds on the table will go back
Yes, it is.
To bond counsel
Right.
Share the inquiry as I requested, and then come back to us.
Yes, that is correct.
So if there's no other discussion on this, we'll just suspend the amendment at this time and not vote on it.
Correct.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, then.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and can we just make a copy of the language of the amendment and give a copy to the panel up here as well? Okay. I have now Senator Uggan. Senator Barnes, you had no other questions or comments or amendments? Okay. Senator Uggan, any questions that you may wish to follow up from what you had presented earlier?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, I guess a lot of it goes back to the numbers, and I'm very appreciative of not only the chairman who has oversight over the agency for the overall presentation during the public hearing on this legislative measure, but also the information being provided by members on the panel. I guess some of the questions would be, what is, and this perhaps will be directed towards GIDA, what exactly, or what do you anticipate the market rate possibly being if, in fact, GWA is able to go out into market over the course of the next 30 days?
We're talking about the 2013 issue?
Yes, about the initial financing.
Okay, just for the body's information, I don't know if I misunderstood, but I heard a couple of references to a 142 million dollar number, and then subtract, 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 but the resolution that the CCU passed and that the GIDA board passed was that the first series of bonds would not exceed 195 million dollars. We believe that market conditions have improved from when we went out for the airport financing. We also are anticipating that we're going to get fairly good news from the rating agencies. We got some verbal indications after our presentations to them recently that will assist greatly in being able to reduce the cost of borrowing. We have a 7.5% cap, I don't think we're going to be close to that. As a matter of fact, there are some indications that the first series of financings, which are meant to net 140 million, just for the body's information, that's 140 for project costs, may run us somewhere in the neighborhood of 180 million. costs, may run us somewhere in the neighborhood of $180 million to net the $140. And that's taking into account the debt service reserve and the two years of capitalized interest. So Senator Uggan, the opportunity with the rates having settled and then fallen, and I, probably not the most politically appropriate thing to say, but our friends in Puerto Rico are also suffering greatly. And they're our primary competitor for the triple tax exempt paper that is going to be floated with Guam Water Works Authority. So there's a lot of outflows, I was just reviewing a bond buyer article today, outflows of cash from big investment firms like Oppenheimer. And these people need a place to park those outflows of cash. There's very, there's a severe lack of confidence in Puerto Rico's ability to maintain their existing payments on a large amount of outstanding debt. So that is another, although not a glowing commentary on Puerto Rico, it does have a positive, a potential positive reflection on the issuance of Guam bonds that would be needed to replace bonds or outflows of cash from people who are skeptical about Puerto Rico.
What was the question? I'm trying to relate it to the answer.
I guess the most, the most direct response that can be provided right now is, when the airport went out and sought financing, what was the interest rate that was allocated? But see, it's two different entities. It's like mixing apples and oranges. So my question again, Mr. Speaker, is, is if in fact GWA were to go out to market, what would be the anticipated interest that could possibly attain? And all that preface of information that he provided, I think is very helpful, but he didn't answer the question. So, I mean, is it 5.5? Is it slightly less than 5? I mean...
I'm sorry, sir. Again, that would almost be like crystal ball, and I would be disrespecting this body if I said something like that.
No, I understand. I mean, but even in previous discussions with regards to floating bonds, the market renders sufficient information to say, okay, it's presently at this level, at 4.2%. You know, so considering, unless the market flips over the course of the next 30 days, it could conceivably go up slightly or go down slightly. So I mean, that's the kind of information that was provided, Mr. Speaker, in previous discussions for other bonds, so I was hoping that we could get something to that effect. But I think it's very interesting information, and I thank you for sharing that, because based on the authorization now to go out into the bond market and borrow $195 million, that rather than $140 million being automatically set aside under construction fund, that particular figure would increase. So it obviously presents some additional questions in terms of whether in fact GWA would be open to relieving the ratepayers after, obviously you see the revenues coming in, and because right now if you're talking about a 31% and a 57 or 60% rate adjustment for commercial businesses, if in fact you're able to deposit $180 million in the construction fund rather than $140, obviously you're $40 million ahead on your first borrowing scheme. And so that's going to be a follow on question. But I guess the other issue I have goes back to, Mr. Speaker, in terms of what conceivably at the 7%, because we'll go with your 7% response, what conceivably could be the annualized debt service?
The annual...
Not the capitalized interest, but the annualized debt service.
Yeah, the annualized, the annualized debt service on the first $195 million would be about $15 million. Currently, we're paying $7 million on the 2005 bond, which was, what was our borrowing that?
106?
No, total borrowing.
It's about 101.
So in 2005, we borrowed 101 million. We're paying $7.5 million a year now of principal and interest. In 2010, we borrowed 10118, $118 million, just short of the, we borrowed $118 million. That also, and the principal and interest on that is 10 million? 10, 9 million?
110.
On the 118?
118. It's about 7.5.
Okay, so it'll be 7.5 million. So we've been paying $7 million in principal and interest since about 2008. In FY14, that will now go to 14, 14.5 million, as the principal and interest for the 2010 bond kicks in full. We've finished the third year of capitalized interest.
Okay, now going to, I understand that you provided, Mr. Speaker, the chairman of CCU, Senator Sanchez, had provided information that perhaps it's best to stay with the three-tier borrowing scheme. And one of the concerns I shared a little earlier was that it will cost the ratepayers approximately $33 million. So where did I get that information? It's based on your borrowing scheme presentation. Unfortunately, the numbers may be adjusted based on market conditions. But based on your initial borrowing scheme of $203 million, now it's down to $195 with the authorization, it would have been, the financing costs, which is all inclusive of the interest due and the set aside, would have been $63 million. The second borrowing scheme of $188 million, the financing costs would have added up to about $59 million. And then your third borrowing scheme of $106 million would have added up to $33 million. So, Mr. Speaker, that's really where I got the bottom threshold of if in fact GWA, without touching your rate adjustment scheme. And I understand the need to set aside resources and make sure that they're properly applied towards payments and meeting some of your operational requirements. But if you were to go out into the bond market, literally to borrow on two separate occasions, rather than three, conceivably, slightly less, you could save the ratepayers slightly less than $33 million of bond set aside and interest, capitalized interest on the borrowings and the consulting costs associated with that. So rather than 215 hypothetically, 216, as the next borrowing timeframe, will, how would, if in fact that was a proposed borrowing scheme, two borrowing options rather than three, how would GWA react to that?
Yeah, there's two issues that get created. First off, to spread out borrowings over five years, we can spread out rate increases over five years. If you accelerate them to one year, you collapse all those rate increases. If you do it in two borrowings, then you would have to speed up the backend of the rate increases. So basically, rate increases are going to come faster than they currently do. I'd have to, we'd have to sit with you, Senator, because to run your numbers, you know, you were quick with, you know, how you figured it out, and it sounds like you understand a lot of it, but we'd have to sit down and run exactly how much would we borrow? Because first thing, we'd have to sit down with Martin and say, well, what's the court order say? When do we have to have money? All right? And one of the things we wrestled with US EPA is, they wanted all this done by 2016, and we got this pushed back to 2021. So the challenge of moving up your borrowing is you're going to have to move up your rate increases. All right? So, but you do save some money.
But in this case, Mr. Speaker, I think the good gentleman is alluding to the fact about moving up a borrowing scheme or the rate adjustment, but keep in mind, you already have one moved up a year prior. If we go with a two-tier...
What do you mean, we have one moved up in the prior...
Let's say, rather than 2013, in addition to 2013, you borrow in 2016. So you already have a rate adjustment taking effect in 2015 that would generate some revenues...
For 2013.
For 2016, if you were to go out to the bond market.
Well, it's really to give us the principal and interest in 2015 that we'll have to start to pay, pay in FY16, when we borrow the money in 2013. So if we borrow them, if you allow us to borrow the money this month, in two years, we will have to begin principal and interest. So in FY16, October 1, 15, FY16, we, he would have to have the principal and interest available for the 2013 bond. And then we borrow the money in the, hopefully, November of 2015. He needs principal and interest by November 2017. The 2017 borrowing, we push off principal and interest to 2019. If you move it up, all of that moves up.
Well, what I'm alluding to, Mr. Speaker, is that in this case, and I apologize for speaking hypotheticals, but if it could conceivably save the ratepayers 30-plus million dollars, then that's 30-plus million dollars that could otherwise either go to projects or be applied directly towards rates, rate relief.
Well, I think your tradeoff will be, you may save them some interest, but you're about to increase their rates years earlier than you would have otherwise. So they could have been using that money for other things.
No, but you already have a rate structure, a rate adjustment proposed for 2015.
Right, but it's designed for three borrowings and two years of capitalized interest. If we had gone to do, let's take your, if we were to take your hypothetical, we would have to run the numbers, we'd have to make sure you have principal and interest accumulated. And you got to remember, we have to run, PUC raises rates at the rate of 175% debt service coverage. So even the challenge, Senator San Nicolas, of paying principal and interest right away, it's not just the principal we have to come up with, we got to come up with 175% of principal. Okay? All of that, all that does is it moves the 57% rate increase spread out over five years to finance three borrowings that will have principal interest payments starting in 15, 17, and 19. Even though we borrow the money in 13, 15, and 17, the rate increases that we've gotten approved will put us in position so that by 2019, he can pay the principal and interest on the third borrowing.
Okay, rather than continuing to discuss this as a hypothetical, Mr. Speaker, if we can work with GWA as well as GITA, and possibly just crunch the numbers, because it goes back again to if in fact the rate adjustments, based on the PUC's approval, remains intact, then rates will be adjusted in 2015. But if we could push out the borrowing one year, subsequent to that, that year, the projected timeline of 2015, and one year up from rather 2017 borrowing is 2016, what could conceivably be the results in terms of the overall number? So, Mr. Speaker, please, if I can ask your indulgence and ask the assistance of GWA as well as GITA to see if by any chance, just roughly, those numbers can be crunched? Because if it could lead towards not necessarily immediate rate relief, but really more or less saving the ratepayers money in the long term, certainly that's an issue. Now, one final question, Mr. Speaker, based on the, should the market rates be favorable? And if you were able to realize above and beyond $140 million of set aside construction funds, would that eventually, over your $495 million proposal, bring that borrowing requirement down slightly?
Yes, a lower, we use 7% projected interest cost for all three borrowings, and that's why it grew to 495. But yes, if we get, our two notes now are 5%, okay? And we're not investment grade, okay? So if, so it's conceivable, of course, this was 5% in 2005 and 2010. Today's 2013. Mr. Carlson can give you lots of information that has been shared with us in the underwriters, that unfortunately municipal bond financing rates have climbed since the spring, after a couple of years of being pretty low. That's why even GWA benefited. But the Puerto Rico crisis, Detroit went bankrupt, I mean, all of a sudden municipal financing is not, you know, it's a challenge. And so rates have gone up. And so it's hard to project what we think, and we have some ideas what we think we might get this borrowing for, but we're trying to be very conservative. We put in 7%. Now, what's good about the rate increase from the PUC is, every year we have to go back and true it up. We got to make sure it's right, right? What happens if, you know, power bills are lower, we had more savings? What happens if we get a better interest rate than 7%? Well, next year, next summer, we'll sit down and say, hey, does the 2015, FY15? No, yeah, FY15 rate increase have to be as high as we thought a year ago, when we thought it was 7%? Oh, maybe it only has, now it can be lower because it's a lower interest rate. We do the same thing in 16, or 14, 15, 16, 17. When we actually borrow the next tranche, whatever it is, whether we do two or three, you know, we would actually find out what was the interest rate. For now, we're using 7. If it's lower, then all those rate increases will come down. So one of the things we're hoping for is that we've made a strong enough representation to the rating agencies that we will get improved ratings from them. We expect to hear from them this week. If we can get investment grade or near investment grade, like what happened to GPA, we had a wonderful situation happen two Novembers ago. GPA got all three investment grades, we had over fi, almost four billion, five billion less in subscriptions for a small $250 million borrowing. We were oversubscribed like 20, 30 to 1 because we were now investment grade. As you know, once you're investment grade, more investors can look at you. When you're not investment grade, some investors just say, I don't even look at you. I'm not allowed to look at you. You have to be investment grade. So we're hopeful that interest rates will be cheaper than we projected in the 495. The PUC has an automatic adjustment that says, because we're not going to ask for any more debt service than we actually pay, right? I mean, and if the lower interest rate is lower, then we'll be able to walk in and say, hey, remember what we thought in 2013 at 7%? It came in at 5.5%. Less capitalized interest, right? Less reserve, right? Because PNI will be lower, and everyone will benefit. And the PUC will control the rate increase they release to us by comparing it to what you thought happened, what you think will happen in 2013. Every year, they go, 14, let's take a look, 15, let's take a look, 16, let's take a look. That annual true up is part of the rate increase. We're not automatically guaranteed this 57%. We have to justify it every year. But what's nice about what's the process we use with the PUC is, we can tell the marketplace, the bond market, that we have, we've always been able to tell them, we have the support of the legislature to borrow money, and the governor. We have the support of the PUC to give us rates to pay back the money. And now, here's our package, please loan us the money. And we're hoping to send a signal, the final signal to the bond market has to come from getting the permission of the legislature and the governor to borrow this money. So, you know, one thing in this discussion that maybe we want to think about, you know, the 195 is pretty, is pretty much locked in. I mean, CCU's already approved it, GITA's already approved it, the PUC, that was the representation to them. They approve the rates based on that. You know, if you want to say, all these numbers you want us to run, if you'd like, perhaps as an alternative, is, we'll try to run these numbers as fast as we can, but every day of delay is, every day of delay, 10 basis points of interest going in the wrong direction is worth $6 million to ratepayers. That number we did calculate. And right now's the time to strike, because the rates have actually, for the first time this year, gone down. So while it's good that we're debating structure, delay also is not our friend if we don't get permission to borrow from the body.
Mr. Speaker, I think that I would have to take some deference to some of the statements being made, because there's a reason why this legislation has gone through the fast track process, and we're entertaining it today. So any reference to delaying acting on this legislation, I think is unnecessary at this point in time. Because I mean, even there's this commitment about trying to get response from Mr. Dirks, if we're able to get that in the next hour, I can almost assure you that this legislature would act on the proposed amendment. I'm just saying.
Well, one, he's traveling, and two, it's 2:30 in the morning, so we're not going...
I'm just saying, in this case, I don't think there's need to make any reference to delaying, or even to discuss the possibility of delaying this legislation, because this legislature has moved very quickly to try to bring this on the floor, and then obviously that's why we're discussing it. So thank you with all due respect, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. And before we recess this afternoon, I just want to make sure that the panel here understood Senator Uggan's request, and that maybe you may make yourself available so that they can clarify any questions they have in order to run those scenarios. I now have Senator Brent McCready for specific questions on the bill.
Thank you. I, just listening to the conversation, I may want to proffer an amendment. On page 2, line, line 9, where it says, these bond issuance, these bond issuances in one or more series. And from what I'm hearing is, it's going to be three series. So I would like to proffer the amendment, these bond issuances shall be issued in three series.
Don't do that.
No?
Don't do that.
Okay, so...
Hold on, hold on. We'll have the author complete his amendment.
You know, let me go through, let me go through the question from the beginning to the end. It's going to line item, and then we can come to this amendment at the end of the questioning. And maybe you could help me better understand why we wouldn't want to proceed with an amendment to the, to the bond. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine.
Thank you. My first question is on line, page 1, line number 13, and the reasoning for my questioning would be to find out what, and let the taxpayers know in layman terms, what exactly they're getting for their money when it, when it has to do with the rate increase at 31% maximum. So my first question is, we're going to bring all three Southern wastewater treatment plants in Aggett, Yumatic, and Baza Gardens into compliance with their secondary treatment permits at an estimated cost of $111 million by 2018. So my question would be then, from 2018, when this is, when this is complete and we're in compliance, how long will the life expectancy of that infrastructure last us? Mr. Roush?
You know, typically, infrastructure lasts about 50 years, and some of the treatment plant equipment, when we take the aggregate of the equipment plus the structural, some of the equipment will be 10 years, some of it 20. So it's good to say the expected life will be over 30 years of the aggregate.
So we, over, over 30 years... So we, over, over 30 years? For this secondary treatment permit? That's what we're.
Yeah, the, the physical infrastructure will have an expected.
When was the last time we improved this infrastructure for this specific permit?
I don't think.
He's only been here three years.
Sir?
A long, I mean, we were sued because they don't work.
Yeah.
And we were sued in '02 because they still weren't working. And these, when were these structures built? Martin, do you recall, at least you have that idea, or Tom? 60s, 70s, 80s? So they were built before you were born and, and they weren't maintained. And in 2002, we were sued specifically because of the wastewater issues facing all of the plants. These are now the, what we call the three southern wastewater facilities. We now have agreed on a solution and an amount, and we now need the permission to borrow the money to go build them. And they'll, and once we build them, if we maintain them like we're supposed to, they could last 30 to 50 years.
30 to 50 years. Now, the second, on line 16, repair, rebuild all GWA water storage tanks islandwide at an estimated cost of $153 million, and that's by 2021. Now, are we looking at the same 30-year life expectancy?
I would use a longer life expect, I'd use 50 on these tanks. We've gone to a concrete tank design on the last, when we, we completed the construction on recently, Baragada, and we've gone to kind of that standard concrete design. We believe it has a, a great, a much better life cycle cost, although the front end, so 50 years would be, would be the life expectancy of a tank.
So one is 30, one is 50. And the second page is line one, invest $48.5 million for water distribution projects islandwide to begin replacing badly leaking water lines, improve pressure with booster pumps and upgrades, and refurbishing or drilling new wells. Now, you said that the, the current, the current turnaround time to, to fix these leaking pipes is two days. It used to be close to a little north of a month. Is that true?
Yeah, I think Senator, the Senator Adda said it was 38 days, and Gita Gray brought it down to three days.
Okay.
And that's, that's correct.
So now with this, with this improvement to the, to the water lines, would that eliminate the possibility of, of main water line breakage?
No, you're, you're never going to eliminate, but you're going to vastly reduce. We have, pipes have a 50-year life cycle, and we haven't done any, any, any substantial or any maintenance, you could say, to our system. So it's degradating at a certain percent per year, and we're at 22% degradation rate. So our models show we should be investing about $7.5 million a year just to maintain the 22%.
So, so the difference, Senator, is instead of us sending a crew just to repatch a 25-year-old line for the 40th time, we're going to use these monies to replace that line.
Okay. Fund $39.4 million for system analysts and monitoring and technology upgrades for better system management and energy savings. And to minimize rate payer impact and allow for gradual rate increase spread out over five to seven years, an additional amount of $142 million is required to fund two years of capitalized interest plus a debt service reserve for each bond borrowing.
This is this whole conversation that we've been, you know, to, unless you want to start paying for it.
I got that, that's my last question. But now, now here we come to line number nine, these bond issuances in one or more series. Could we, one or more series is, is really not specific.
No, actually, it's a, it's a term of art that's used in bond issuances for this reason. In 2005, GWA issued its first bond. It was always contemplated and recognized as has been kind of, and you'll find this language in all the other bonds. You get the first, the first series of bonds is 2005. When we, we expected we would have to borrow the money, a series of borrowings over time. And so when the enabling language was created to allow GWA to borrow any money, it says, okay, you can borrow money in one or more series, right? Subject to, in this case, these approvals, right? So what it contemplated is over the lifetime of a utility or an entity, a government entity, it's, it's, it's possible that the government entity would borrow more than once. So that's why it contains the language that says, you can borrow in one or more series. So there was a 2005 series, you know, there was a 2010 series, there'll be a 2013 series, 2015 series, 2017 series, our grandkids might have a 2042 series. Because the, the bonds all have a lien on the GWA revenues. And bondholders, that's why we get such cheap money because we're, we're using revenue, a revenue stream, it's not general fund, it's GWA revenues only, they can, they can put a lien on it. And unlike a more, a home mortgage, if GWA were ever to default, they don't want the tanks. They don't want the, again, your wastewater treatment plant, they want the cash. So the lien is on the revenues of the Guam Water Works Authority. GWA is allowed by this law to borrow in a series of borrowings over time as needed and approved. You still have to get, the amount of borrowing still has to be approved by the, by the legislature and the governor. But it does say, it does allow you to borrow because basically in 2010, we had to tell the 2005 bondholders, hey, your lien is still good, you still have a, you will have a parity lien on revenues, right? We, now we're going to tell the 2005 and the 2010 bondholders, hey, when we borrow in 2013, your lien is still good, you will have a parity position on GWA revenues, but you're sharing it now with the 2013 bondholders. And the, and the 13, 2013 bondholders know when they buy the bond, they're sharing the lien with the 2005 and the 2010. So this is a term of, of art. I, I don't, I think if you put any amendment in there, we definitely would want to run this past Mr. Dirks, but I, it's really a simple language, as you can read, it's very straightforward language. It just says that you can borrow in a series of borrowings, subject to approval of certain parties.
Once these, and would you consider this the biggest capital improvement taking on for GWA in its history?
Yeah, yes. Prior to 2005, GWA never borrowed any money. Prior to 2003, GWA, well, GWA wasn't made autonomous until 1998, it was a line agency up to then.
So once these, once these infrastructures are in place, complete, and, and it's brought up, you brought it up several times, and Vice Speaker Cruz brought it up several times, that our grandchildren might be paying for, for these infrastructure improvements?
Well, they will be using it and paying for it, just like we are.
My question is, throughout this, this bond borrowing process, that, that we have a maturity date of 2055, at what time do you, have you projected that we would then have to go back and refinance this bond before its maturity date? And, and to, to implement different type of mandates from whether it's self-imposed mandates or federal government mandates? I don't think the mandates will be the same in 20 years as they are today. So my question is, when do we refinance this? What's the projected refinancing for, for these projects?
So here's what we think, we hope we never, we hope we never have to refinance these, these debts unless, only unless interest rates are better. Okay? We hope that when we borrow this money, we pay it off in 30 years and that's it.
But you do agree that in 20 years, we're going to have different mandates to comply with, right?
Well, maybe, I mean, hopefully, hopefully we're not being told 20 years from now that GWA doesn't meet Federal Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act. We don't ever want to go back to this movie. I mean, you're seeing what's going on in the landfill. I, I mean, if we don't, if, we've been given a chance to do this ourselves with the, you know, and our intention is to meet the court order, come into compliance, and stay in compliance. Period. I, I mean, that, I would want you yelling at GWA and CCU, if we, if we weren't, if we were back, if we were non-compliant after this, you'd be throwing us out, and you should. So we hope we never repeat the movie that we're trying to end. Okay? But you raise a good point, and here's how we think about it. In 2005, we borrowed $108 million. In 2035, it's paid off. So if my grandson needs $100 million in 2035, he could, he's, he could borrow the money, and he wouldn't have to raise rates because it's already in the rates. The debt service on the 2005 bond is in the rates. The 2010 bond will be in the rates. The, the debt service on 13, 15, and 17 will be in the rates. As these notes retire, two nice things happen. You can, you can give, you can lower your rates and give it back to ratepayers, or as you're, and you know, you're probably right, some balance might occur that says, hey, we need to fix some stuff, it's 30 years old, it's 40 years old, my grandfather didn't design it right, or whatever, right? And then you would use it. But we're hoping debt falls off in 35, in 40, in, you know, 45, right? So remember, these are all 30-year notes, we've never, even though the law says you can go up to 40, no one's ever issued 40-year notes. The market doesn't like 40-year notes, they like 30-year notes. They want their money back faster.
Okay, I have just one last question.
We hope never to refi, and we hope to, as, as we, just like you do in the legislature, as you reduce the, reduce the debt ceiling, you might, your successors 10 years from now say, hey, we might go build a school with, now that we've paid back debt for 10 years, maybe we'll go build a school with some money. I mean, that, you always want that tool as a policymaker, borrow money, pay it back, borrow money, pay bank. Banks want you to do that, and we often need to do that.
Mr. Chair, just have one last question.
All right.
We have a bill coming up, and it has to do with systems development charge. So I would, I would like to know how this, and if it does, how would it affect the SDC? And are we dependent on that cash flow from the development charge to help the debt service of this program? Is any part of that, that cash flow going to, going to be used to, to fund this?
No, by law and by PUC order, we cannot use system development charge money for operations or debt service. But what it does is, if we can get 5, 10, 15 million in system development charges from the growth of the community, that means we borrow, we don't have to borrow 5, 10, or 15 million. So we use system development charges primarily, here's the first thing we'll use system development charges for. More water is going to be needed. When you add more structures, we use the system development charge to build more wells in the north, or to replace the wells we have and increase their output, make them more efficient, so that we have more water for the new structures that are joining the system and that have paid the system development charge. So the SDC works as a, as a, as a financing tool in which the developer pays upfront, will take over the system when he's done, and will, will maintain it thereafter, but you pay the upfront costs. But if I need to add three wells up north, I don't have to ask existing ratepayers for that money. I'm going to take it out of the system development charge.
The question.
That's fine, and no, no amendment, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much. Actually, I was glad that Senator Keady went before me because it, it made for more questions for me. This is not going to be the last borrowing, right? For GWA.
You're talking about the 495?
Right.
It, it may not be.
In full transparency for the, for the listening public, we do know that you're either going to be going into litigation to fight the issue of the EPA on the upgrading of the sewer system. And if you don't succeed in that, how much will that borrowing be in order to be able to meet that obligation?
Okay. It, it, well, I think you're referring to the possib, to the probab, you're referring to when secondary treatment will be required for the Northern and the Gania wastewater treatment plant.
Correct. And how much will that cost? Because I don't want everybody to think this is going to be the last borrowing. The, the next borrowing is probably going to be even larger than this one.
Maybe. But Martin, what would be the estimated cost of secondary treatment for Northern and Gania?
Yeah, our preliminary estimate, our planning estimate at the current, you know, population is about $260 million. The reason that's, that's an important estimate based on today is, the goal is to put off that for 20 to 25 years, 25 years as Honolulu did. So that if we did have to do a borrowing for secondary treatment, then that would be when the 2005 bonds have been paid off. So we're looking at, we're looking at doing, we have, we're getting the same team together, engineering and economist as Honolulu used in the negotiation. And right now EPA is very receptive to looking at more of a long-term negotiations for that. So absolutely, at some point, we may need to borrow at today's dollars, about $260 million.
All right. I, I just wanted that clear. And also, as both the two, last two retiring speakers have gone through the, through the numbers, they've been fairly, they're, they're not even estimates, is 153.4, 48.5, 39.4, it's not maybe 40 or maybe 50. My problem is that when we get to the 142, it's 142 without explaining or at least breaking down what that 142 is going for. I would like, Mr. Chairman, for them to break this down for me. If it doesn't, even if it's not now, at some point, I just need to know what that 142 is in, to the, to what, to the 142. And also, 142 at 7% over the 30, 30 years is going to be how much? My, my advocate says closer to 300. And breaking that down over a 30-year period, that would mean we'd be servicing it about 10 million a year. So I'm just trying to, to figure out what the difference is because I really, like the Senator from Dedado-Talaful, I have real problems with, with this large number, especially since I don't know where, like you broke it down, where it's distribution system, whether it's analysis, whether it's, it, it, it's too, and it's the second largest number in this whole list. And it has, it, it's not broken down. It, it makes me very uncomfortable.
We'd be happy to break that down for you, Senator.
We'll get that done. Okay. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, as we look to borrow money for these necessary upgrades, does, I mean, Martin, does GWA have any plans to incorporate to reduce or contain the cost or provide better operational efficiencies to potentially reduce rates? If that's possible? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys are looking at it as well as, at the same time borrowing.
You know, that's, 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 that's the right question for a general manager. Our job is to make a more effective and efficient utility. And I think the two things that we, we, we think that we can continue is, on the reduced Navy purchases, we estimated very conservatively 1.4 million savings per year as opposed to three years. Our independent engineering report for the Bond Council said that was 2 million, we're more conservative. We saved 2.4 million by the reduction of prompt leak repair. So those were our two initiatives to be more effective and efficient over the last two years. And I think it's going to be harder to find money at that, that level, but we have three new initiatives that we're looking at that we believe that we can start to implement, and we'll just manage and track that. When we start to do the manhole repairs, which is in this borrowing, we believe that we can, you know, and we want to start off with the low-hanging fruit of just raising manholes, sealing manholes, and, and raising and repairing manholes, then we can reduce our power costs because we don't like that 70 cents per dollar going off island. Then the second one is in the pipe replacement. We, we haven't, we've started experimenting with pipe replacement programs, kind of using a, more of a county engineering model. We have a contract in place where we don't use 100% PSNEs, we just go out and replace lines. As we, as we replace lines now, we're going to believe that that, that'll save us on our water loss. So therefore, we'll start just as a prompt leak repair, save us money, we'll save money there. We're tracking that via the, using the international standards of water loss. And I think our third, third is the Revenue Protection Unit. We're looking at mapping all our meters and our sewer connections and then do parcel-based mapping, which is a little bit more long-term because we're, we're dependent on getting a grant right now from US EPA, but they're in line to do that. So those are their three initiatives next year, combined with our initial cost savings that we believe we can make a difference and reduce rates. And I, I believe that we absolutely made a difference reducing rates. I mean, really, it's GWA's staff that does it, you know, and, and you just tell them what to do, and, and they made the difference. We didn't expect this big of an increase. So we've communicated that, that's our goals for the next couple of years. We talk internally about how it's our job to make sure the rate increases are less for our community. So I think it's becoming part of our culture.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, just have two more questions. Specific to, on page one, to the Southern Waste Treatment Plants, I know we had been having discussions on this on the side, but I, for the record, I, you know, we mentioned that the, the Aggett-Yumatic-Molesu treatment plants have reached capacity, that's correct?
Yeah, they're, well, for example, the Aggett-San Rita is double the capacity, the, the, it, it's, it's kind of blown out. kind of blown out during storm events and during normal operation events. It's even over its capacity.
So my question would be, what does this one-hundred-and-eleven million, what does the scope of work involve?
Well, I think, you've asked the right question, but I can't give a specific answer, 'cause it really depends on the treatment plant's size and when we get the studies done. But when you design a new treatment plant, you certainly, you design for some future growth. And we'll believe, we believe that we'll submit that to the CCU and kinda say, what are future growth? And that becomes a policy statement. But we will, we did put some future growth, substantial future growth, maybe ten years worth of growth, into our initial cost estimates. But we also believe we can get additional capacity through the INI. That's the inflow and infiltration. That's the, the first step is the manhole hole program. So as we seal the manholes, as we protect the integrity of our system, that'll also give us more capacity. And then third, we found out, well, it was a pleasant surprise. Everyone talked about the new plumbing code and, and five years after we built our treatment plant, the last treatment plant I built in another jurisdiction, we ended up having half the capacity than we planned, because the new plumbing codes that were adopted really, really reduced the amount of water and the footprint of those homes by fifty percent. So I think those three elements will give the South a lot of room for growth and potential for growth.
That's to be included with this one-hundred-and-eleven million specific?
Yes.
So, so, Mr. Sanchez, you can give us insurances that the CCU would ensure this body that would be part of the policy as well? I mean, I'm not trying to micromanage any scope of work here, but I just wanna ensure, we've been in discussions about potential development down there, but the number-one question that keeps coming up is, these waste treatment centers have reached capacity. So we have the property, we have the potential funds, but we just can't proceed. But I just wanna make sure there's insurance for this body as we proceed on this measure.
Yes, in fact, as once we do the actual feasibility study, we, to try to size it, we'd be happy to share that information with you, because I think you'd all be interested in the size of the Agate facility, the Bozogardis facility, and the Malesu facility, because that is useful information that says, well, how much growth do you think might occur in Agate? And you're gonna be able to answer that probably better than us. So we would reach out to the community and say, this is what we think is the size of the facility we should put in Malesu. I mean, frankly, we even kicked around in the idea that we would pump everything from Malesu and Boza back to just a bigger Agate facility. Maybe we'll centralize it. You know, we already share the outfall with the Navy, so why build another outfall, right? So, I mean, but all of those are part of the process for us to size it. But in 2011, when you're negotiating the court order, and since 2011, in order to size some level of borrowing, we, Mr. Roush and his team have made some intelligent projections about capacity and size. And those need to be further supported by the studies that would be done prior to actually completing the sizing. And then we'd be happy to share the results with you. And if, you know, the challenge is, if Malesu says, we want to be bigger, can you give us a bigger wastewater facility? We would look at that, right? And we just all have to remember that Malesu's paying for the growth in Dedado, and Dedado's paying for the growth in Agate and Malesu. So we've never treated the, we've never separated the island and said, hey, growth in the north, you pay up there, and, you know. But your point is well-taken, that we would want to size it to reflect the ambition of the community in that region. And we would be happy to share that information with you as well, to see, you know, maybe we've undersized it, or maybe we've oversized it. You know, you may find out, some community say, hey, don't make it too big. I don't want Malesu to have twenty thousand people. That's gonna be your call, not our call.
I, last question, Mr. Chair. I know it's not specific to one of the projects here, but I think it's a fair question. And I know we talked about Ogam and some of the issues it had during heavy rainfall. Is there a reason why Ogam is not part of any potential upgrades? Or is there current projects in place to address those challenges it's been having with handling ten inches of rain?
We have, I mean, you know, Tom did the CIP this year, Tom Cruiser, Chief Engineer, and last year. And we have Ogam projects in the CIP. And that includes an additional storage tank. But let's say, it's not quite enough for a two-million-gallon storage tank, but let's say we built a two-million-gallon storage tank. The demand south that feeds us two-million gallons a day, it's a lot less during the rain event, which is helpful. And then we have additional storage capacity. So that would only gain us a day. So that's why we put together that plan to feed Ogam from the north in the wellfields. When we're in a tropical depression or a high-wind event, no employees are gonna wanna work out at Ogam. And when you go down to the river, the pumps are what? They're underwater often. So no matter what we do at Ogam, I think that we need to have a solution to serve the south through the wellfields, which, number one, have backup power supply. Number two, do not require humans to be, you know, people to be out in those conditions, 'cause our safety is the most important thing for employees. So really, it's the solution to those storm events. And I think we were successful in this last near-miss typhoon, where did that ve around us. We were successful at serving from the south. We believe that the earthquake with the tropical depression made us better. Even though we were able to serve the south, we are looking for another route to water to the south. We're looking at fortifying another pump station. And as we do storage, there is still the idea that we're gonna redo all the tanks on the island, so we'll get more storage down there. So I think it's a combination of things. But I really believe the investment in Ogam is not the right investment for a storm, but the right, you know, I think we will, so that's why the money in the CIP is for a tank. And I'd rather make a freshwater tank than a raw-water tank.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Any other members of the body have any questions? If not, Senator Ada?
The question that I have is somewhat related to the question that Senator Ogun was asking earlier. Right now, the bill contemplates three borrowings. And the senator was asking about the possibility of just going out to get this 495 in two borrowings. And I'm just, and so I guess his question was coming from the financial analysis standpoint. And I guess I would like to ask, then, Mr. Roush, is there a question of logistics feasibility, I guess, if you were to, let's say, go out and borrow the four, the five-hundred million in two borrowings, is there a question about, do we have the capacity to design and build two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars' worth of projects today without having to have that money sit in for a long, long time?
Well, I mean, that's a good question. We do not have the capacity, and I think even utilizing every engineering firm and all the construction, I don't know that any municipality could handle that big of a capital slug. And we'd have to go, you wouldn't wanna, you couldn't build up GWA staff. You'd have to go and really get a large PMO to do that. When you look at, when you go to Honolulu and you run into the Board of Water Supply, what they say to us, wow, you have a bigger CIP than us, and we're a population of a million. So even under the current plan, we have a very big capital improvement program relative to the size of utility we're at. So I think that's prob, we're at near-capacity at spreading the CIP out at five years. And that's assuming using a PMO to help us deliver that. And the PMO does help the ratepayers, because rather than hiring this huge staff to deliver five years' worth of projects, what it does is, you hire the PMO, then after five years, you let the PMO go, rather than let your staff go.
And the other issue is, I mean, even if we could manage it on the PMO side, the construction industry in Guam is only so big. You know, they can only, and they're building schools, they're building museums, they're building GPA stuff. GPA's gonna do liquid natural gas. That's a half a billion dollars. This is three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred million in construction. You know, even if we had the world's greatest engineers ready to deliver, there's only so many contractors on Guam that can do it. You all went through the buildup, right? And all these people came in, getting gearing up for the buildup, because you needed to bring people in to gear up for the buildup. And there was a very healthy discussion in 2010 about, would Guam be able to attract contractors to bid on its projects when they're all trying to build the new marine base? So that's a second factor. But Greg has pointed out something to me that I had forgotten, but he's also raised another, another policy issue, which is, contributes to why we spread it out over three borrowings instead of two. This whole idea of not, of having more money than you can build within a certain period of time. And it has to do with arbitrage. And I'd like to ask Greg to just mention that.
Well, I'm not a bond tax expert, but, you know, our spending rate has some implications too, because this is considered a tax-exempt issue. And if we don't, essentially what happens is, the bondholders don't expect us to make money off of their money. So if we make, essentially make more than what we're paying, then there's tax consequences. And, you know, those, the bonds may end up being taxable, as opposed to tax-exempt. So it's our spending rate too that we look at. And we typically, this last bond issue, the 2010 bond issue, I mean, it took us just over, just about three years to spend the one-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars that we borrowed. So...
Yeah, but I looked at the interest rate paid on our trust funds, and they're like point-two-five percent. So I don't think we're gonna be worrying too much about arbitrage. So, Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. On, you know, on your presentation to the legislature at the public hearing, you had indicated that with the borrowing of two-hundred-and-twenty million and what you've spent, and you've listed the Ogam Water Treatment Plant, and then now we're seeing again, in your Phase Two of about seventy-nine million dollars, you have the Ogam Treatment Plant at six-point-six. Can you tell me what the difference is, and how much was spent for the Ogam Treatment Plant, what was done, and then what needs to be done, again, that would take an additional six million dollars?
Well, I look back at the previous chief engineer, and he was brilliant at meeting the court order with the minimum amount of money. So what he did when he built the, 'cause he had, he had this court order, and he had a limited amount of money. So he built, he built the very minimum he could at Ogam to meet the court order. Then we went back, and we put another one-point-five million in for reliability. That's spent, that's completed. That would've made it into the significant findings. Now it's out. So this next phase at Ogam may not physically be built at Ogam. The six-point-six that we put in there was the idea of putting additional storage at Ogam for, you know, that would give us about one-point-five million. Is that correct? In that range, one to one-point-five million. So that was the idea, putting an additional storage tank at Ogam, so that during the weather events, and these, even small weather events cause the turbidity in the water, the water gets muddy, and we can't run Ogam in some storm events. So the idea is, Ogam was refurbished with new pumps to pump the water up. It was moved to a membrane plant, which is more fail-safe, and more, you know, it's safer, more fail-safe, and was built with more reliability, and pretty much refurbished. Now, this phase, we don't know how we're gonna spend the six-point-six exactly. We put in there as a placeholder for storage. So we're planning on building a new storage tank. But we may decide that that might not be the best location for the storage tank, so that might get moved a little bit further south.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. We spent ten million from the 2005 and 2010 bonds to get Ogam to these new membranes and upgrade it. Then we added the one-and-a-half million was a US EPA grant. So actually, we got that for free. That was a million and a half. And now this six million is this placeholder for increasing storage somewhere in the south that would receive the water from Ogam treatment. It might be right next to Ogam, it might be further down. But Ogam makes the water for the south, that, the southeastern side of the island. Ogam makes all that water that is drank there. And as long as, it's only when you have heavy weather that you've had the disruption. What we're really proud of is the quality of the water and the consistency of the flow, since we put the ten million in. And the only time it gets disrupted is when you have these huge storms. But some of that has to do with just, the decision was made twenty-five years ago to build Ogam at Ogam, and to put, right now, the river flows, the tanks up on the hill, and the river flows past it below, and we pump backwards. Now, we pump back and up, which is expensive for power, and it also puts the receiving area for Ogam down in the river, where when you have the heavy weather, you can't even send your people down there. Now, why it was designed like that twenty-five years ago, it's not worth debating. We inherited it. But we did put the ten million in from the '05 and 2010 bonds. We're putting, we got a one-and-a-half-million-dollar free-money grant from EPA. And now we have six million from these borrowings that we would invest in the south to store Ogam water as it makes it, so that we have at least twenty-four hours of water in a tank, in case we lose Ogam for, while the storm is passing, right? And meanwhile, we'll be sending water also from the north to this tank. This tank can keep receiving water. So it really is fundamental to trying to strengthen the system we have in the southeast for Inarahan, Talafolfo-Inarahan, and Malesu. And it started with the upgrade of the plant, and now the tank.
I mean, that's a, that's a lot of money, of course. And the problem hasn't been resolved yet. And you're just talking about, you know, keeping the water flowing during the storm. But then you talk about quality of water. And I live in Malolo, and I have a filter. And I see, of course, the mud in my filter, so I can't even drink the water. And it's a sad thing to say, because I've always heard EPA saying that our water is safe. And we should now start drinking our waters. Well, I can't drink the water yet that's coming from Ogam, because, as I said, I have a filter that I have to change very frequently. So I don't know, I mean, eighteen, you're looking at ten, eleven, and six, that's almost eighteen million dollars, and still, the quality of water. We may get flowing water, but the quality of water now, you know, to be, for the people that's serviced by the Ogam River to safely drink the water.
Can I answer? I believe Ogam's, the water that comes out of that plant is pristine, and with any bottled water, could be with any bottled water in the world. I really have to support that plant. What's probably happening in is, it's the degradation of the water lines that are causing the rust that get, that hit your filter. So it's not the, it's not the quality of water coming out of Ogam, it's the water, once it's in the pipes. And then this, this plan has about, was about twenty-five million over the next five years to begin that pipe replacement process. Some pipe, we have a pipe prioritization plan that we believe that will go after the Amestas pipe, and some of the two-inch pipe that causes a lot of that rust.
Yeah, the Ogam water, Madam Speaker, is Hanum Sinaga.
Okay. On my next question, earlier you had mentioned about planning for organic growth in about ten years. And I'm wondering whether you factor in, because the discussion is still going on with the military buildup. So are you factoring now beyond just the ten years of organic growth, but another growth that potentially, of course, now could affect our infrastructure?
Well, for the Northern District Treatment Plant and Agania Treatment Plant, Agania's got, those plans, Agania's got about, it's only at about fifty percent capacity. And Northern, with our negotiations with US EPA, currently it's four-point-five. They've given us, I'm sorry, it's about five-point-four. And they've given us a permit that we can go up to nine. We believe it's about eight-point-five, we need its capacity. So those two plants serve seventy percent of our population. And we believe that the military buildup would either be in the north or central, or they would take their own treatment. So those plants will handle the military buildup. And in the south, I think we can handle the organic growth. But we certainly, this is very preliminary planning. We know that this is now a major issue that we have to communicate. So we use our engineering guidelines, and we'll be bringing that back to the CCU when we get to the planning phase on the treatment plants.
So you will be planning then for the south, 'cause you have apparently the capacity, like you say, in the north?
We have the capacity in the north.
And central, but not for the southeast, strictly for organic growth?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't finished, we haven't done a preliminary, we haven't done a preliminary design to say what capacity we're recommending to the CCU at this time. No, that is not done. But so this is the good time to get us very aware that this is a community issue, so we can do a better job approaching it.
Now, the last question is that, you know, for a lot of projects and borrowing and all that, there's, you know... all that, there's potential impact, and of course, all the projects, we can see what the impact would be. But what would be, will there be an impact in terms of jobs now being created because of these projects?
Construction will benefit, construction jobs will get created by all of this investment in infrastructure. So that's the primary impact. And we hope that, you know, as you know, and you've witnessed it, Madam Speaker, the construction industry has grown with Guam, kind of shrunk with Guam, and then grows with Guam. But we have a larger industry today than we had 50 years ago because Guam has grown. So we're hoping that some of this turns into permanent growth, permanent citizens having a job, you know, so that when they're done building GWA stuff in 2020, maybe there's more hotels to build or more, something to build, right? So we're hopeful that they're sustainable. But at least for the construction phase, we know will create opportunities for our contractors to hire our people to build, and then as long as you watch stuff like the H2 program, which I know you're watching, and some of these others, so that you really first hire our local people first, get them the training, then we should be successful. But at least we'll be putting money out there for our local contractors who are paying their taxes and hiring people to build things for us and pay the government, it's their taxes.
Madam Speaker? Thank you. Any other questions? Senator Uggins, did you have one final? Oh, she asked a question. All right. Thank you very much. Senator Ada?
Just one quick question. And again, this goes back to Senator Uggins' earlier question, which I guess GWA is supposed to go back and do some number crunching.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if we still want to do that, considering the fact that even if we were to go out and just borrow in two trenches as opposed to three, that, you know, part of the consideration is the local capacity to be able to actually carry on that much construction. Otherwise, we're going to have the money parked in the bank, you know, sitting there for a longer period of time.
The committee is going to request that the GWA respond to the questions posed by the senators.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right. Senator S. Nicholas?
Just a quick follow-up question so I can make sure I understand what's been shared today. The recent rate increase that was approved by the PUC for this borrowing was using the assumptive rate of 7%. Okay. So inclusive of this 142 million that has capitalized interest, that's based on a capitalized interest assumption at 7%?
Yes, and yes, yes. Now, just for the record, the PUC consultant is confident that we will be borrowing the money for less than 7%. Of course, we didn't hear, I don't, I mean, that's just what they believe. So in the stipulation that lowered the rate increase from 67 to 57, they told the PUC that they want to see, that part of the reduction was because they believe GWA will borrow the money at a lower cost than GWA thought it would borrow the money. The nice thing about it is, the borrowing the money, it'll cost what it costs. Maybe we're right, it'll be closer to 7. We hope the consultant's right, it's closer to 5. But that's what lowered the 67% to 57%, simply by playing around. Most of it, I mean, there's a few other adjustments, but most of that was because they said 5, 5, 5 and 1/2 percent, we used 7. All right? That's the main difference. Now, we hope they're right, it's closer to 57. We hope maybe if it's lower, it'll be even lower than 57. We hope we're not right. But it was, we didn't want to misrepresent to the community. We wrestled even with the 7 and 1/2 because the market this year's been kind of funky, but we left the 7 and 1/2. We said, let's force ourselves to be underneath it or else we wouldn't borrow the money. And we're hopeful we can be lower than 7. But, you know, you know as well as your finance man, you know it's hard to predict.
So the 57% rate increase that we currently have on the books is based on a 7%?
Actually, it's based on 7% for 190, the first one, and they're hoping that the 15 and 17 borrowings will be at 5%. When we calculated 495, we used it at 7%.
Okay, so it's still at 7%?
All at 7%.
Yeah. So for your purposes, it's 7% in here?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So Senator Uggins?
Sorry, Mr. Speaker. Just because the good chairman with the oversight had mentioned about the capacity, and I want to thank you very much for continuing to follow up on requesting that information. But I think there's one thing that we need to also consider is if in fact it's more cost effective to take that option, there's absolutely nothing that prohibits right now or restricts GWA for possibly, let's say you have a capacity to put $200 million worth of projects out in the community, and you go out and borrow 250, there's absolutely nothing that prohibits GWA from accessing or acquiring a PMO for the remaining balance. So I look at it as not necessarily a capacity issue, but it's whether in fact we are able to project and get some of these projects going. And I don't particularly need a response, it's just the good chairman with the oversight had mentioned that, and I think that there are mechanisms out there, and a number of individuals have worked in the private sector where in fact we can also partner with the private sector so that we can get some of these things going. So I, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggins. If I may just try to attempt to summarize then the requests made by members of the body. First, we have Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes and her amendment, and the request would be to have the bond council review that in order to pick up the discussion on it and place that amendment before a vote on the body. And that amendment was given to GETA as well as GWA. Second was the request by Senator S. Nicholas on the issue of calculating the 142 million dollar, the non, yeah, non-capitalization of the interest over the two years. Correct? Senator Uggins had requested what it would cost if it was a two-series bond instead of a three-series bond. Correct? And any other requests? Senator B. J. Cruz?
Breakdown on the one.
The breakdown on the 142 million dollars and detailing that amount. Senator Ada, did you have any specific request that I recall? Yeah. And Senator Rodriguez? No, I don't thi, yes, yeah. So, okay. Those are the major questions. It's past 5:30, or close to 5:30. And so this committee will then recess, request GETA and the Guam Water Works Authority and the CCU representatives to begin working on those responses and bring them back to the body tomorrow morning, and we'll recess until 9:00 AM. All right? Thank you. And just to say everyone for your cooperation. Tomorrow I'll ask my questions.